Commissioner Dirck.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
And Commissioner Gross.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Fiani.
Support Helsnerman.
Are there any additions, questions, or revisions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those approve, oppose, say by the same sign, apparently not. The next item on the agenda is titled Special Rec- Recognitions. I'm sorry, what did I miss over there? The next item on the agenda is Special Recognitions. We're going to be recognizing National Police Week, the National Corrections Officer Week, National EMS Week, and Livingston County Cold Case Team with special guests in the audience, former deputies and sheriff of Livingston County. And so we'll start with, with the National Police Week. If I may, Lieutenant, would you come up, please? You're getting to be pretty popular.
Yeah.
Let me come down there.
Lieutenant, it's been a great deal of pleasure to present you with a certificate of recognition for the outstanding and the Sheriff's Department does here for the citizens of Livingston County. This road patrol certificate and the Corrections Officers Certificate. More is, is everything that we have to give you this evening, but trust me, you're in our hearts and minds every time we see one of your cars. You know, I said with a great deal of truthfulness as I traveled around the county. Things about the EMS department. I stress one thing. The head is that if anybody out there has an accident or illness that falls in, if it happens in Livingston County, the chances of them surviving the experience is far better than it would be. Bob is former sheriff of Livingston County. He's hard to miss. Some, some of the guys that have shot you in the past. Close. And Bob is going to hand out the awards recognition for, heck, I'm going to turn it over to you. You know this better than I do.
Okay, briefly, brief history on the, we had a homicide case in nineteen eighty-three. Christina Cassidy was kidnapped from Redford area, she was found in Livingston County, March nineteenth, nineteen eighty-three, and I have some of the detectives and they were there on the original case. And this case was just recently solved. In two thousand nine, the sheriff, we started the cold case team. This cold case team, as many of you remember, the Metkowski case out of ninety-six. They've been working on that case and several other cases, but they finally were able to resolve this through DNA. So, under Sheriff. I promoted you now. First off, in recognition, I'd like to just present this on behalf of, all these tributes, by the way, are signed by myself, Anne Bolen, Lana Tyus, Governor Gretchen Whitmer, and Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist. So they're pretty much all the same thing with the same stuff, but basically talks about the cold case team and the hard work that they've done. But I'd like to call those up. Original team that was on that scene in nineteen eighty-three. Lieutenant Mike Smith, can you come forward, Mike? Mike was in charge of that unit at that time. Our boss, so we got to be nice to him. And then, Mrs. Steinway, can you come forward? This, this award is sadly posthumously awarded Detective Al Steinway on behalf of Al. Mrs. Steinway is here to accept this and our gratitude for all the hard work he's done, not only in this case, but so many other cases. Some of these awards, we've got, we've got some of the people that couldn't be here tonight and, but I'd still like to mention their names because they've worked hard on these cases. Police Chief, and with the cold case team, a lot of these guys are, well, most of them, all of them were former law enforcement and they, and they came on and they've worked tirelessly since oh-nine on that, a lot of these cold case teams. And they don't get anything for it. They pay for their own gas and it's just they have a passion for law enforcement and they wanted to, to be involved with this. But Police Chief William Lannan is, is not with us. We have Lieutenant Jim Lynch. Jim, can you come forward? Was in charge of the cold case team and it was his team and the cold case team that, that put in the DNA to solve this case. So Sergeant Detective Sergeant Matt Young is not here, he's in training. FBI Agent Robert Getchman, he was trying to make it during the night, couldn't make it, but we even had the FBI involved in this one. Mike Frayer was Police Chief of Westland, he couldn't make it this evening. Detective Joel Morrow, I believe he was Westland too, right? Yeah. Deputy Debbie Barker was brand new, I think she just started in.
Not too long.
Yeah. So we had this brilliant idea to use her as a.
Decoy?
As a decoy. So we had, we had two cases down there, homicide cases. So we had a surveillance team and we caned it one night because we lost her for about ten minutes. But anyway.
We lost, we lost communication.
Well, again, remember communication back then, it's the cans, you know.
We, we did have information that the victim had the injury, that's why we were, yeah, we didn't just throw her down.
So Deb couldn't be here this evening either, but those are, those are the team. This is the team that worked on this case after forty years. I was the lead detective on the case, I had an obvious passion for this case. The parents of Christina Cassidy Leona passed away. The daughter, siblings are still in the Redford area and they couldn't make it tonight. But we're very pleased at the hard work that all these people did from the original team all the way through the cold case team. So thank you.
Well done. Take a couple, one, two, three. That's good, one, two, three.
Thank you, Commissioner, for allowing us to do this.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate. You want to stay up here, Bob? Oh, hey, guys. Don't anybody leave. Oh, hey, guys.
Thank you. Yeah.
Sorry, guys, we're going to take another five minutes of your time.
So the Livingston County Board of Commissioners recognizes. Did I do that?
Yeah.
You know, I can get along without this.
He did.
Oh, he did that. Livingston County Board of Commissioners recognizes. I'm going to, this is the third time.
Go ahead.
The Livingston County Board of Commissioners recognizes the service and the devotion of the men and women who serve us in the Sheriff's Department. And Ed Moore, I've known him, where'd he go? Ed, come on up here. He's the best dressed detective. They don't know he's a detective because he doesn't look like that. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, Bill Lanigan, and he's not here, we'll see that he gets that. Jim Lynch, please. Matthew Young.
He's not here.
He's not here.
Bob's not here.
Bob is not here? How about?
Nope.
He's not here either? What about Mike Smith?
Yep.
Mike, hey, was it something I said these guys didn't want to show up? What the hell?
I think it was me.
Mike Smith, you're back. Mrs. Steinway. And last but not least is Bob. What is this?
Yours truly. Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is correspondence. We have correspondence from Eaton County, Lenawee County, Osceola County. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to receive and place on file. All correspondence received this evening.
Support.
Been moved and supported, put on file. Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say a like sign. We will now have call to the public. Madam Clerk, would you give us a list of the people we expect to have?
Yes, first we have Stacy Farrell from Osceola Township, followed by Mark Heinz.
Hi there. Is it working? Okay. Stacy Farrell, among the many roles that I serve within the community, I hold a citizen seat with the Human Services Collaborative Body. I'm here tonight regarding Resolution six dash one hundred regarding communication and the scope of the collaborative. All community needs are taken into consideration when providing services, including the unique needs of the LGBTQ community. So just because there isn't strictly a representative organization for that group doesn't mean the need doesn't exist. But I'm not here to determine if those events in the newsletter are within the scope of services or, or the mission. That information is best provided by the members of the collaborative and the clinicians that do the work. Unfortunately, that opportunity was not afforded to the members of the collaborative before this resolution was drafted. I absolutely think that this discussion should be had, but it doesn't happen like this. This decision should not be made by the folks who have little to do with the HSCB, or in the case of Mr. Gross, who holds a committee seat, I'd concede that the best way to handle this would have been to making him aware and bringing the issue to our executive committee to have the discussion placed as an agenda item that any commissioner could give input on. But that did not happen. This iron fist resolution came from a non-member who I've never seen at a meeting. Matter of fact, all of you were invited to the annual meeting and no, not one of you attended. So I'm sure you can see how offensive this is to the hardworking folks actually doing the work in the community. Had there have been an opportunity for a rational discussion, I'm sure that this could have been resolved easily. I brought these gears today from when I coached my son's Lego League team because I was going to try and explain how a collaborative works as a system and covering, in covering needs that intersect together, but it's moot at this point. But one of the core values of, of the Lego League is something called gracious professionalism. It's a way of doing things that encourages high-quality work. It emphasizes the value of others and respects individuals in the community. With gracious professionalism, fierce competition and mutual gain are not separate notions. Wes, I called you. I invited you to learn more and you ignored it. All of this could have been avoided with a conversation and a little bit of gracious professionalism. This resolution is neither gracious nor professional. In my opinion, this resolution shows a failure to learn and grow from past mistakes and a continuing to further micromanage the systems in this county without regard to the people who actually do the work. Please do better by our staff and bring issues like these through proper channels to show that you honor their work and you honor their commitment to this community. Thank you.
Mark Heinz Howell, followed by Steve Livingway.
And Mike, I didn't, I didn't make this announcement before the young lady made her presentation, but every speaker has, has given three minutes to speak. And when we're down to fifteen seconds, I'll wave this at you. And so that's time to wind down. Thank you so much.
All right, hopefully this works. Hopefully I can read and do this all at the same time. So hello, everybody, I'm Mark Heinz. I'm the Chair of the Human Services Collaborative Body. So today I'm going to speak on behalf as a member of the Human Services Collaborative because I think that there's been some major misconception about exactly what our mission is and exactly what we, what our scope is to you. So I just wanted to educate you guys a little bit today. I did send out an email and with the attachments and the proper links to everything that we created as well. So like our bylaws and the newsletter and, excuse me, also our missions, goals, and values statement are, yes, I thought that right. And so bear with me while I'm looking through here today because I do see that you do have our section one point one and our bylaws, but you don't have the section one point two, which actually states our mission of the HSCB, which is ensuring a system of support for members that we're a community, which means that, which means that it is, it seems like it is well within our bounds that we can promote the events that we have on, in our newsletter and the newsletter events are, are supported by the, and pass along by the executive team as a member of, so as far as we, we talk here today and I sit in front of you a little more confident than I was in previous times when I was Sheriff of other things. We, as a, well, I technically myself and some of the group members to sort of feel this way is that we really want to have, have to be included with these discussions and conversations and especially because we think that it's, it is again, or at least I think it's unfair that, that I wasn't, and we weren't involved with the conversations that were, were set at the, the personnel meeting and or other meetings that may come. So I had to find this out by one of our other board members, which is also not necessarily the greatest. So I just hope that you all think about what you're doing here and what that means for the future of the service communities within our, within our county. And lastly, I just wanted to leave this with you because this is in our value statement that we are, actually the last point in our value statement is that we support other people's work, other organizational work that regardless of private and or public, but all these events that were on our newsletter are public events. So I just, just want you to be informed about, about the decisions that we have here today. So thank you and I will yield to the next person.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Livingway Howell Township, followed by Carrie Lindberg.
Good evening, Steve, thank you very much. You got three minutes.
Might be sick of seeing me. As you know, we're probably because I've been coming to some meetings and sending letters and sending documents and I'm here on behalf of Reaching Higher. Back last December, this board with different, with some different members passed a resolution providing funding for Reaching Higher for every school district in our county. And man, out of the money that, the ARPA funds that came, it was pretty small, less than half a percent. But to us, it's, it was huge, huge announcement. So we were, of course, ecstatic and immediately began working with superintendents, principals, and teachers and parents to bring Reaching Higher to even more and more students. I sent you a, a pretty detailed plan of what this looks like and what this could mean for our community. We've been, we've been here for twenty-five years and we have no hidden agenda of any kind except to help kids. And we actually are fortunate here in Livingston County. I feel very fortunate just when you were honoring the people here. Feel the same way. We're very fortunate, we've had a lot of support from the schools and parents from LESA, from the Livingston Sunrise Rotary, year after year, to bring our program to as many kids as possible. I know you don't answer questions, but I would like to ask at some point to know, will there be a final decision of some kind made? Because we either need to tell schools, we've already said yes, we're planning, we would need to start calling parents and schools and saying, I'm sorry, the, the class is gone. So I know it will be on your own time where you will let us know, but I'm not sure what else or information, I haven't heard anything since the last time I've had people come and speak in person. I know you've gotten letters even from county employees themselves who are mentors. I know you've seen our curriculum and our mentor manual and our instructor manual. I know you have a plan of exactly what the classes would be implemented. I know you have ten years' worth of data that shows that this program works. And I know you've heard letters from students saying this program works. It's changed their lives, sometimes it's saved their lives. As you know, I'm a retired principal and I've seen a lot of things come and go. I've stuck with this for a long time, over ten years myself because it works and because I love the kids in our community and they're hurting right now. I think it's the best use possible of these ARPA funds to go right into helping our kids. So I know you want to answer the question, but again, if there's a way I can get an answer, that's what I am seeking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve.
Carrie Lindberg Lyon Township, followed by Brian from Hamburg Township.
Hello, my name's Carrie Lindberg. I'm a follow-up. I'm a parent of a child that was able to attend Reaching Higher. I'm new to the Michigan area. I had no idea what Reaching Higher was until my daughter was asked to attend. In the process of attending Reaching, Reaching Higher, I'm sorry, I'm going to get emotional. She was diagnosed within twelve hours. She went from walking to paralyzed. And Reaching Higher was so important to her that after she was released from the hospital in a wheelchair, she attended the graduation. And that was the first exposure that I had in person with Reaching Higher. As she walked in, I had seen children at the ages of eleven to thirteen. Think about middle school kids. Think about typically what their attitude is. And these kids walked up to my child and embraced her and welcomed her and opened arms because they had been taught how to do that through this program. At the graduation, each of these participants spoke. And the feeling that I had in my heart was this is saving some of these kids that maybe wouldn't have made it. And that might sound extreme, but we have suicide rates going up. We have mental illness rates going up, especially in kids these ages. And as these kids spoke, they would say, I didn't have anybody. I didn't know what to do. I felt alone. I didn't know what the next step was. This program is saving these kids. It's giving them a place to not only learn leadership, to maybe one day sit in the seats that you sit in, but it's giving them hope and it's giving them the courage to change a community, to change a culture that exists in middle school. And that is the power of this program. And that is why it's so important that we continue it because it will really change the culture of this county because it starts with these kids that are future leaders. So think about where you were at that age and what a benefit that would have been to you so that you could have achieved even sooner the things that you're able to achieve now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brian Fassion from Hamburg Township, followed by Barbara Nies May.
Oh, hello, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. This is in regards to Resolution two thousand twenty-three zero six one hundred. And I just want to say, I believe the purpose of the HSCB is to provide or to decrease barriers for services for health. I would argue that these LGBTQ events have people there where services are advertised and promoted. Some of them are psychological services. Others are maybe shelters, there's actually one here in Howell. But this group also is in need of feeling community affirmed. And this group, they're at high risk for suicide, depression, violence. They're a very small fraction of the community. And it's really important at these events that these groups come together and be able to collaborate with one another to help this group thrive. They're a minority, they need extra attention. And regardless of, you know, what people think of groups and what their personal values and beliefs are, they are still citizens of this county and they need, they have barriers, you know, not there that, that prevent them from getting, you know, the connections and services that they need. So I would just say, please consider that, that, you know, you could be creating a barrier by voting for this resolution, you know, for these type of events to help these people. So just please keep that in your mind and I encourage you to, if you do vote on it tonight, to vote no on it. And just, you know, really think about it because it just seems like in the political, social climate right now, unfortunately, this group is getting, for whatever reason, getting put out there and they're just such a small fraction of the society. They really just need our, our hope, our love, and our support. Their lives really do depend upon it. And I have a family member who is transgendered and so it's very deep to my heart. And we didn't ask for it. It's not something that you necessarily want, but I understand it more. And once you go through it and you're in those shoes, you really, it gets to your heart and you understand it. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Barbara Nies May, followed by Gil Henders.
Good evening, thank you very much for your time tonight. My name is Barbara Nies May and I live in Hamburg Township. Commissioner Fiani is my commissioner. I met you when you were door knocking our door and sorry, I usually make a phone call to my commissioner, but I just got this information from my church last night. I'm a proud member of the United Methodist Church of Brighton and there are several of us here because we have deep concern for Resolution six one hundred. Promoting events is, a lot of people have already said some things, so I'm going to drill down to the points that haven't already been made. And promoting events is part of their mission. And I think to. And I think to state that certain populations shouldn't receive the same information and treatment and support is overreaching and overstepping. I think that that should be left up to the mission and values of the, of the group. And they've clearly stated that this is part of their mission and values to share this information. Also, we shouldn't be excluding members of our community. We, as a, as a county, as a community, it's very, very important for us to show that everybody is welcome and everybody has a place here. Collaboration also, collaborating with different groups also saves money and gets more people together in ways that advances missions that are important to all of us. I think if we start excluding this group, then what about another group? And what about another group? And then what if there's something that you wish to advance or you would like to see happen? And you don't have the support of some of these groups? I think that that could be detrimental to future work that you're doing. In closing, as a resident of this community, I'm a very proud resident. I love living here for the recreation opportunities, the people, my church, the restaurants, and just, it's a great community to live in. And when I heard about this, I was so disappointed. I was just so disappointed. And I'm hopeful that either you'll table it for further conversation with the body or vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gil Henders from Brighton, followed by Lori Humphrey. Is it Hender? My apologies.
It's not due to my age. I never learned to write in high school.
Okay.
Country school 75 years ago. I'm Gil Henderson from Brighton. I'm a retired principal from Farmington, 25 years at four different schools. And I served as, I guess, 10 or 12 years on the Novi Board of Education and one term as mayor. And I used to sit at that table for years. I often wondered what it felt like on the other side. And I'm nervous. Anyway, I am, I'm also a member of this. I didn't realize you were going to be here. I'm a member of the same Methodist Church. And I think you need to be cognizant of a couple of things. Whether you agree with me or not, I'm not responsible for it. But you need, I think all of us need to be aware of good process. And I hear some frustration with yours, whether it's valid or not, I don't know. But I assume they know something. Secondly, I think behooves you to start paying attention. And I also hear some mumblings around communities of changing attitudes. And I have 11 or 12 grandchildren, up to 35 years of age. And they keep telling me, Grandpa, things are changing. Our Presbyterian church site in Florida performed a gay wedding publicly this year. And I had, I have, out of my 11 or 12 grandchildren, I have three female that my 38-year-old brain goes short every now and then. Can't remember what we tell women that are homosexuals. But my first wedding in my family for grandchildren was a lesbian granddaughter. She is now pregnant for twins. You talk about change. File that one away. It's nothing strange. It's not rare. It's common. I sat in a meeting Saturday with five guys. And I asked, I told them that my story. And every one of them, and they're all over 60, every one of them had a relative in the same situation. And I throw this stuff at you, regardless of your own personal opinion or, or how you look at it. There is a change going on in this country. And there's a change going on in Livingston County. I know. I hear it. I see it. And I forgot who it was that spoke a minute ago about Reaching Higher. That's one of the most productive things for young people I have ever seen in my 50 years in education. If you want to help young people in trouble, get on board with Reaching Higher. There is nothing. My wife teaches in it. The starter of it is a friend of mine. He used to live across the street from me. You want to do something right for kids, get on board with that group. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, sir.
Lori Humphrey, Osceola Township, followed by Jen Slack.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm here for the Resolution 100 like everybody else. I'm not going to talk about the fact that people in general, they have a need. They need to belong somewhere to feel complete. I think that is already kind of been addressed earlier by the earlier two folks who, who spoke. I guess one of the things that has given me pause is, and if I'm reading this correctly, the problem is you're identifying them as private groups versus public groups. And whether they should be advertising in this newsletter because they're a private group. So my question is, how are you identifying private versus public? Because when you read their websites, there's no more public group that you can find. It says, everybody welcome. There's no fees. They're not doing anything to harm anybody. But if you look at the ad where it appeared that is causing such a controversy, it's right next to a private organization that charges for classes. So the idea of private versus public doesn't really seem like that is a valid issue to be basing this on. So, and I understand you don't answer questions, but I guess that's something that you should take into consideration. If that's what you're going to say is the basis for your decision, I would ask, how are you defining private and public? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jen Slack, Howell, followed by Scott Obersky.
Hello, my name is Jen. It is nice to meet you all. It is my first time here. I am speaking today because I have lived in Livingston County since I was seven years old. And I wanted to share a little bit about my growing up experience here in Livingston County in relation to the proposed Resolution 100. To be honest, growing up here was really hard for me. At the time, I could not understand the behaviors of the people around me. I was surrounded by people who smiled and acted nice to some people, but then turned around and were extremely hurtful to others or excluded them altogether. I saw this in my neighbors, in my classmates and their parents, in trusted adults. And I was constantly confused and concerned that I would do something wrong and then bring that attention on me. But I didn't know what that something wrong was. When I was little, kids like me were targeted because of what they wore or because of how much money we didn't have. But soon it morphed into targeting certain religions, races, or other identities, such as the queer community. And not just with words, but with actions. This was pervasive. It was not escapable when you were in those classrooms. Growing up here, I was taught that some identities were simply just not okay. This was really hard for me because I am part of the queer community. I could not even admit this to myself until late college. And I didn't even come out to my mom, who was here in support, until this year. For your reference, I am 33 years old. I denied a part of my identity for so long because growing up here taught me to be ashamed of myself. So I pretended it wasn't true. But I shouldn't be ashamed. I know I'm a good person. I care about helping others, about sharing positivity, about helping people be successful. I graduated college. I received my master's degree. I have a good job where I make a real difference in the world. I'm happily married. I own my own house in downtown Howell. We support local businesses. We go to farmer's market every single weekend. We walk our dog with all our neighbors we met. We talk to people when we garden. I go to events like Pride to make sure kids do not feel the way that I felt when I grew up here. No kid deserves to feel like they have to live in fear, like they have to hide a part of themselves. Queer people are not bad people. We're just people. And we live here in Livingston County too. And please remember that you represent 100% of your citizens, which includes me, a queer person. So in terms of this proposed resolution, claiming that Pride does not fit within the scope of human services is essentially saying that queer lives are not human lives and do not deserve human services. This message is not okay. Kids should not have to grow up the way I did and watch as adults actively exclude some people. Instead, we have the opportunity to change the narrative and teach kids all, that all people deserve love, respect, and understanding. Queer people are just people and human lives deserve human services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Obersky, followed by Seth Barnhill. Scott is from Howell.
Howdy, y'all. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Scott Obersky and I've lived in Howell and worked as a quality manager in Fallerville for about four years now. This is my first time speaking with y'all, hopefully not the last. To clarify, I do continuous improvement for industrial manufacturing process and occasionally moonlight as an auditor. I saw right in y'all's mission statement, you guys are well familiar with continuous improvement. I think it was, is it the effective use of resources, if I, if I recall correctly? Resolution 6-100, as it's read, appears to claim that the Human Services Collaborative Body promoting the events of local NGOs or private organizations, as they're referred to in the text, is quote, "not clearly within the scope of the mission of the appointed entity." After a 15-second Google, I found the following mission statement on the SH, I'm dyslexic, apologies, HSCB website. "The entire mission statement of the organization is," and I quote, "ensuring a system of support for members of our community." Whole thing. I went on to learn that the HSCB is composed of several different working groups and each of them have their own webpage. I learned that in every single one of these, the following excerpt is included at the bottom and is entitled Partnerships. Goes as follows. "The success of each of the committees," lost my spot, two seconds. "Success of the committees depends on the ongoing commitment of Livingston County organizations, businesses, officials, local government, and residents. Together, they work to ensure all county residents are represented and gaps are addressed." Gaps is a term I'm very familiar with in, within the quality space. It means that you've identified a problem. And if you're a reasonable entity, it means you want to fix that problem. In August of 2022, HSCB Community Needs Assessment and Evaluation Committee published a fact sheet that quotes the following statistic. LGBTQ people report experiencing discrimination at higher levels in 2021 than in 2020. The numbers are 46% in 2020 compared to 59% in 2021. For my friends in the audience, that's an increase of 13%. More of our brothers and sisters in the LGBTQ community, they get treated differently just because of who they love. 13% increase in discrimination in one year. I would call that a gap. Since it is included on the HSCB website, I can only assume that there's some folks over there who consider that trend line a gap as well. Luckily, we already have systems in place we can use to start to close that gap. Directly under the mission statement, the HSCB lists one of its duties as follows. Develop strategies and programs to meet current and future needs. To me, an average citizen of Howell, it sounds like this is what happened. HSCB utilized a free service, a newsletter, to raise awareness for an event of an NGO in an area that has been identified as a gap through its own publications. This seems to me as though the system is working as intended. So I'm not entirely sure what the point of the resolution would be if it's already addressing gaps that it's addressed. So, anyway. Running out of time, but appreciate your time.
I'm sorry.
Have a good evening.
Want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak. We do have a large crowd here this evening.
Thank you.
So. But thank you very much for, for being here this evening.
Seth Barnhill, Green Oak Township, followed by Ally, I believe it's Geisner.
Hello, and thank you for having us all here this evening. Yeah, I'm Seth Barnhill. I'm here on behalf of myself and my wife Stephanie, who could not be here this evening. We have lived in Livingston County since 2011 when we moved to the state. And my wife is on the Part Alliance of Livingston Committee and I'm a volunteer with them as well as other services in this community. With regards to this resolution, you know, the HSCB, as many people have stated this evening, states on their page on the Live Gov website that collaboration requires a broad community presentation and should provide a caring community for county residents by supporting each other's work. With regards to this resolution, these sorts of organizations like PAL and the LDC do exactly that. The Pride event on Saturday was a great example of that. There were many different groups represented there, different organizations that were offering services to the community. From parents groups offering advice and help to other parents, to, to offering acceptance to young people, to churches, to, you know, county organizations. All of these, these groups are represented. And in addition to that, if, if any of you were at the Pride event on Saturday, you probably overheard or would have overheard things that I heard and things that we've heard here this evening as well. But just to reiterate a couple of those things, I heard these kinds of comments time and again during this event. One that stood out to me was from a lifelong Livingston County resident. Someone who was probably, I'd be guessing, in their late twenties or early thirties. And they said that the, the event on Saturday, coming to Pride, was the first time in their life they had felt accepted and supported in their community. And to me, that is the very definition of the stated mission of the HSCB. So I would urge you to consider that as you consider and vote on this resolution. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Ally Geisner from Marion Township, followed by Heather from Hamburg.
Hello, hello. So I'm Ally, also here on Resolution 600. My first time here, so I'm a wife and a loving pup parent. A, this might be dangerous, Michigan Wolverine, who studied math and computer science. I'm an ex corporate data analyst and business manager and am currently working at creating pottery and woodworking and maybe one day starting my own business. I also identify as pan or bisexual, i.e. not attracted to a single specific sex. And I'm a huge supporter of queer rights. While this is how I identify, having found my partner in a man and aligning with my birth given sex, I'm not subject to the same prejudices as many others in the queer community. But it's easy to say that embracing one's full self in the face of societal and familial pressure is beyond hard. Every day, there are humans who are kicked out of their homes, cut out of social groupings, denied employment, and placed into a monolith of stereotypes because of who they happen to love. According to the Trevor Project, 28% of LGBTQ plus youth reported experiencing homelessness or housing instability. They experience higher rates of depression and anxiety. And 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the last year. Members of this community don't do this for fun. They don't do it so they can wear bright neon colors. They do it because we all have the right to find love with any other consenting person, regardless of that person's gender or sexuality. So what, why, why am I here? What does this have to do with human services? Families, schools, and communities that accept and support LGBTQ people have been linked to lower rates of attempting suicide. It isn't rocket science. We as humans seek and need support and acceptance. Homelessness, mental health, sexual harassment, food insecurity, these are all human services that are on the website. And on our website, it says, "We believe that collaboration requires broad community representation." Well, here we are. This resolution Well, here we are. This resolution is symbolic. It gives us a name and declares us as part of this community. Passing it won't get rid of us, but it will send a signal to those of us in the community that we aren't welcome or seen. And so what I'd like to end on is a Coretta Scott King quote: "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members. It is my hope that we can make Livingston County a great community for all." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Heather. Heather from Hamburg. Heather, I'm going to let you pronounce your last name for me, if you would, please, and then followed by Adam Smitty.
Hello, and thank you for your time. I'm not going to reiterate the things that have been mentioned already. I'm just going to say what hasn't been said. I'm a teacher for 15 years, just to profess. And I need to be very succinct with my words with young people. Their attention spans require that. So my question, and you can't answer it, but you can think about it, is, so we know all these things. You probably knew all this. This fits under the purpose of the organization. So why is this singled out as a resolution? That seems like not so subtle discrimination to me, and it's not okay. So please know that if you vote to, to pass this proposal, or whatever it's called, that, that that's what you're doing, and you're hurting people, and it's not okay. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Adam Smitty, Howell, followed by Connie Conklin.
Good evening. There's a couple of items that have been brought up, and, you know, I like to focus on really like what has affected me in my life. So, you know, I'm going to try to keep it together a little bit, but there was a study last year in Michigan, 2022, by the Trevor Project. And that study found, it was just mentioned, that 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered suicide, and 15% attempted suicide. Now, I think about it in, in my life. So, you know, when I left service, one of the things that really helped me, you know, through my journey of depression, anxiety, everything that I dealt with, you know, with that service, was fellowship. And it was getting back to the veteran community. I started working in the VA Hospital in Ann Arbor. I worked directly with veterans. I worked at the Department of Veterans Affairs and at the Veterans Affairs here in this county. And it's something that actually really helped me reintegrate myself into our community. Really helped me realize that there is a bigger world out there and other people that have been successful after going through service and, you know, things that are just generally not okay, and people just don't understand about your life in the real world. And what I think about is, you know, resolutions like this that are getting put forward, you know, what message does it send to the youth out there that are going through this, these type of thoughts today, right? It is fellowship that matters to them. They need to understand that there is a community available for them. They have a place that they can go where they can feel normal, or they can talk to other people about their experiences the same way that I was able to go through my experience after leaving the military. And, you know, to take that away or to send a message that that's not okay, you know, that reverberates, and that will affect young people going forward. People are going to see that, and they're going to think that this is not a place that is welcoming for them. And then where will they be? What options will they see that's in front of them? You know, will they seriously consider taking their own life? People in our community. I went to high school here. I graduated from Brighton High School. You know, I've lived here the majority of my life, except for when I've been in service. And, you know, I had friends growing up that were gay, that were very pushed to the side, right? You know, they weren't necessarily my close friends, just for whatever it might have been. But those same people will never return to this area because they felt that this area was not a safe place for them to be. They have all moved away, and none of, none of those people that I knew, that I graduated with, that I know are gay, live here any longer. You know, I want Livingston County to be a place that is welcoming to all groups, no matter what you've been through in your life, no matter what you're going through, a place that people can feel safe and have fellowship with other people. So, you know, I, I want you to seriously consider those two type of tracks of people that need fellowship that are going through something like that, when you consider this resolution in the future, and what kind of impact that can have on youth in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Connie Conklin, Osceola Township, followed by Yvonne Mackel.
Good evening. My name is Connie Conklin. I'm the Executive Director of Livingston County Community Mental Health and an HSCB member. I grew up in this county, graduated from Brighton High School, and I choose to live in Livingston County. I'm very proud of the work that we do both at CMH and as a member of the Human Service Collaborative Body. I am, however, disappointed with the resolution that is being presented here tonight and the significant impact on the important work that we do. You should know that our collaborative structure is a model for our state and has been recognized nationally. The expansion of the HSCB since the 1990s has been a direct, in direct correlation to meet the needs of our community, the importance of working together to fill gaps, avoid duplication, and expand the limited resources that we do have. Along with the needs that have been expanded, so is the diversity of our community. But you will only see what you're looking for. As human service agencies, we must pivot to meet the needs of all the people in our community. As a public agency, when you walk in our door, we serve the person in front of us. With services, and our services and supports are very comprehensive. We've seen an increase of 54% more kids coming into our agency for mental health services. We need all hands on deck, which means we need help from our community and everyone else around us. You can't address mental health needs without looking at food insecurities, homelessness. Do they have a job? Do they have friends? All of those things are human services. I rely on our system partners, governmental agencies, law enforcement, libraries, civic organizations, anybody who will help meet the needs of the people that we serve. Human services are expansive, and our mission is sound to do whatever it takes to support those we serve. Working in isolation of each other has never been effective or a good use of resources. This resolution limits our ability to share information, and it's not totally clear what type of information we should or shouldn't share. Sharing all information is part of the mission that gets the work done. Another consideration for the board is that this resolution is in direct conflict with professional code of ethics and licensing requirements for many disciplines, which puts our agencies at risk and our clinicians at risk. There are other potential legal implications of this resolution with regard to federal and state requirements, contracting, that also put our community at risk. And I'm more concerned about the people that we serve at risk. We shouldn't be put into that type of position. Another consideration that I worry about every day, keeps me up at night, is a workforce crisis. We have group homes where we serve people, and we have to have direct care workers that are here that can work, social workers. And as a resident of this county, I'm constantly in a position to advocate that this is a great place to work and live. Resolutions like this make it even harder to recruit and retain staff. I ask that you don't support this resolution because it is not good public policy and puts our residence agencies, community, and resources at risk. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Yvonne Mackel, Heartland Township, followed by Todd May.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Mackel. I'm here to state my disappointment with Resolution 100. Just bringing forth this resolution is something that this body as a whole should be ashamed of. The hatred, discrimination, and intolerance behind it cannot even be veiled, it cannot even be classified as something that is thinly veiled. It was stated that the promotion of these events were not within the scope of the HSCB. I just want to remind you, as other people have stated before, that the mission statement of the HSCB is ensuring a system of support for members of our community. That means all of our community. This resolution comes across as nothing more than a transparent and petty abuse of power.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, the last card that I have for in the, in the chambers here is Todd May from Hamburg.
Thank you.
Good evening, and I appreciate your time. I am a proud member or citizen of Livingston County. I ask you, I didn't come here to speak. I listened to other people speak, and it's got me pretty fired up, okay? What's the purpose? What is the end purpose of this resolution? Is it a good thing? I don't see it as a good thing. What is it hurting? I ask you to challenge yourself. I've been in management for 35 years. In order to be successful in management, you have to be inclusive. You have to listen to others that are different than you, okay? We don't have all the answers individually, but as a collaborative, absolutely, we can come up with it. I am a father of a gay young man. I am extremely proud of how he has turned out. I'm extremely sad at what he went through as a child. He attempted to take his life because of the exclusionary discriminatory practices. Fortunately, he came through that. How many people do we have to lose before we finally wake up and listen and be inclusive? Nobody, my son has never heard of fleas. If you walked up, he wouldn't be any, you wouldn't know. But yep, here we are. We're, I, for lack, and I appreciate the previous speaker that used this as discrimination. What is the purpose? What is the purpose? I don't see any good. You all are representatives of a large community. That includes the LGBT. It includes them. It doesn't exclude them. So I didn't come here to speak, but I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I did get one more card. Colleen Quinn from Genoa Township.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I will be really quick. I just want to say that my husband and I are part of the silent majority that supports the board and what they're doing this evening. That's it. Thank you.
Hey, is that the last one, Clerk?
I don't have any more cards, but there are hands that are attending remotely.
Who's first on the, on Zoom?
First one that we have is Lori Cowan.
Lori?
Thank you. My name's Lori Cowan. I'm from Unadilla Township. And I'm asking the board to vote no on Resolution 6-100, brought forth by Commissioner Nakagiri and supported by Halzerman, Smith, and Sample at the Personnel Committee last week. That's clearly based solely on hate. His explanation as to why it is needed has absolutely no merit. The mission statement of the HSCB Board is ensuring a system of support for members of this community. Tell me how the LGBTQ community is not part of Livingston County and how promoting the two Pride events were not beneficial to our community. Our community, not just your community, Mr. Nakagiri and supporting commissioners. Do not fall into the first step of silencing the appointed boards and committees of sharing information they deem important and beneficial, because you may not agree with it. You represent and should respect each and every resident of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next we have Judy Dobbinmeyer.
Hi, this is Judy Dobbinmeyer from Genoa Township. And I'm here also to oppose the draft resolution that would tell boards and commissions that they may not promote events of private organizations. I think this is not what you want to do because many of the events promoted by Human Services Collaborative Body are those of private organizations that are valuable in the community. Ascension Hospital, La Casa, Catholic Charities, just to name a few. Do you really want to tell organizations within the county government that they cannot cooperate with private nonprofits? Do you want to take on all the duties that these private entities perform for our community? I don't think so. I think you should defeat this resolution because it is poorly drafted, and it's a bad idea. You know, I, I think you need to be very careful about your words. Just on another matter, I would remind you that recently you told folks here in Livingston County that they should ignore laws being passed by our legislature that regulate safe storage of firearms. You told them they didn't have to obey those. Those are unconstitutional. And now we have a two-year-old child who found a loaded unsecured weapon in his or her home and is now dead because of it. I think that is not what we want to have happen, and I would encourage you to backtrack and remind and encourage everyone in Livingston County to safely store their weapons because that law will save lives. So please remember, your words have consequences, whether it deals with human services or safe gun storage. Thank you.
Next we have Marie Gilpin.
Hello, my name is Marie Toffick. I'm from Hamburg Township, and I am here to talk about gun safe storage. On Saturday, a group of us that support Be Smart was at the Brighton Farmers Market. And at the Brighton Farmers Market, we were able to hand out, thanks to Sheriff Murphy, over 30 gun locks. They were all free. Our table was well received by non-gun owners and gun owners. Gun owners came by to our table and thanked us for providing gun locks. They said that they truly support gun safe storage. One grandmother said she was so happy, she took two gun locks because she worries about her grandkids at her son's house with no gun locks. Another gun owner came and asked for three gun locks, to give one to his father, one to his brother, and one to the neighbor. And we had great conversations. In fact, some said, Father's Day is coming up. Gun locks would be a great gift. Lock your gun, save your child. The guns were, locks were so received well. Sadly, as Judy said, six hours later, a young toddler tragically died due to an unsecured gun lock. We, as a community, failed that young child. We failed the toddler, and most important, we failed that family. By not saying we support gun safe storage, they did not secure the gun for whatever reason. It should be in our community protecting. You were elected to protect the community. We could have, you could have a resolution, working with Sheriff Murphy, to supply free gun locks. Some of the gun owners specifically asked, would you please talk to owners and explain how critical it is to lock guns? And they were all receptive. So I'm asking you, as elected leaders, you took an oath to protect our community. You have a great opportunity here tonight. You have an opportunity to say no on the resolution to protect our LGBTQ families. You have an awesome opportunity to support safe gun locks, to support protecting guns so that we are protecting young children and, as you've heard tonight, suicidal children. So please, you were elected to protect our community. Please protect our community by acting on making it safe and not these resolutions that are bitter, are asking people not to follow laws that would save children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next we have Cindy Michalovic.
Good evening, Commissioners. Cindy McNavish, Hamburg Township Trustee. There are plenty of people speaking up tonight about the Resolution 2023-06100. This resolution specifically calls out the Livingston Human Services Collaboration Board. Before reading on, voting on this, I urge you all to read the HSCB's mission, and I think you will find that they did not promote anything outside of their mission. Also, I'm not quite certain that Commissioner Smith's amendment that passed in committee was fully included in this resolution, but since the committee meetings aren't recorded, I couldn't go back to his specific wording. I would like to speak about something else tonight. Last night, Last night, as the two previous speakers spoke, a two-and-a-half-year-old gained access to an apparently unsecured gun, resulting in a tragic fatal shooting, leading to the death of the toddler. In light of this, I give my deepest condolences to the family and their friends. Back in April, Governor Whitmer signed Common Sense Gun Violence Prevention Legislation to keep Michigan communities safe. About that same time, the Livingston County Commissioners declared in a resolution that Livingston is a constitutional county, and the Commissioners urged sheriff and prosecutor's offices to use their discretion not to enforce these laws. In light of last night's tragic accident, I urge you to educate our residents about these new gun safety laws, which include a requirement that all firearms are to be in a secure place if there are minors presence. Present, by doing this, you can build a better, safer future, and you can save lives. I think we can all agree that we want a safer community for our residents of Livingston. Let's work together and govern, not divide, thank you.
Next we have Cam.
I just want to say how un-Christian all of you are for being such a discrimination. You're showing your true colors, you don't care about the community, you don't, you just want to appeal to a few constituents, a bunch of right-wing, Christian fascist people. All of you are corrupt, and you're all being investigated and looked into, because what you're doing is wrong, it's unconstitutional. You're part of the state of Michigan, not a special militia group designed to look like Ottawa County. I, I see right through all of you, and it's, and it's clear that you don't, you're not representing all the people here, once again. Just pure disgust with you, you have no business even calling yourself a Christian, that's all.
Next we have David Christensen.
Hi there, I'm calling to contest the assertion made in Resolution six-one-hundred that the events advertised by the HSDB this month fall outside of the scope of their mission. I was at the Pride event on Saturday and can attest that human services were indeed provided. For instance, there were, there were, excuse me, multiple booths that were connecting people to organizations, groups, and religious institutions that would help provide them with other services and resources. Also, excuse me, having an opportunity to connect marginalized people with each other is an essential human service. I think that, like lots of folks have talked about this today, tonight, that the opportunity for belonging and community is really important. It strikes me that this proposal is a bad faith attempt to stifle the connections of those in need, or to put it in another way, to increase the barriers that they face in their day-to-day lives. The language of the proposal is vague enough that, given the context from which it's, from which it's, excuse me, coming, I don't have faith that it will be fairly applied in the future. I urge the council not to accept this resolution for the spirit behind its, the spirit behind its, excuse me, the spirit behind its letter intends harm to county, intends harm to county residents. Also, on a separate note, I had, you know, I believe that having locks for your firearms at home is obviously a, you know, very sensible and easy thing to do. I have a firearm at home and it is locked up, and so I think that just seems like something that is very easy and very sensible. So that's all I have to say, thanks for your time.
Next up, we have Randy Lawson.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I am glad I was here tonight, because I learned a lot. I learned a lot about the Human Service Collaborative Body and what it stands for and what it's doing, and the great service that it is providing to the LGBTQ plus community. I would encourage everyone on the panel to vote no for the resolution, because it is the collaborative body and some of the other, like the needs, the Community Needs Assessment and Evaluation Committee, there are things already in, in our county that are working to, we don't need this resolution to, to silence those who are working to make this a better place. And that is exactly what I see as this resolution's outcome would be, to silence those who need to speak, who need to, we need to listen to, because they have the, the good of the community, all of the community in their minds and hearts. So vote no on this resolution, please.
Next up, we have Lisa R.
Hi, thanks for letting us speak tonight. And I just wanted to say that I support what you're doing in the resolution. I've been listening to a lot of things, and, and I really don't think life is so different than it was for me when I was in school forty years ago. I was an overweight child, very poor. I was tortured, tormented by kids. I am not a person of color, and I had to learn how to deal with people who were not nice to me. And it's really no different than, and people calling people names, saying that people aren't Christian, that they're mean, that they are, have ulterior motives. I looked up on the website. It is sexualdiversity.org. There are twenty-eight events listed under their calendar. Notable LGBT awareness events, twenty-eight in our twelve-month calendar year. Not to mention a whole month for Gay Pride. I think about our veterans who fought wars for us, for our freemen, for our freedom. One day, we celebrate the veterans. One day, we celebrate people who lost their lives in wars, to give us our freedom to speak the way we're speaking tonight. One day, to celebrate our independence from tyranny. And yet, we're, we are focusing so much on someone's sexual orientation, and I understand there's kids that are going through some really terrible things. I hear suicide coming up frequently, we need better mental health. I don't think we need to put any more attention on people's sexual orientation in our community, in our world. Let's not talk about what we want to do in our bedroom, that's not, where does it end? What's, what's it going to be next? Do we want to have a pedophilia pride day? Because I'm sure that's coming next, with people normalizing that with calling them minor attracted people. I just want to thank you, Commissioners, for upholding your oath of office, which is to protect our rights that the Constitution affords us. It's not to take care of us emotionally or physically, it is to protect our freedoms and our rights, and I just want to thank you for that.
Next we have Dawn Allery.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. A lot of you know me, I'm Dawn Allery. I am the Service Center Manager for Michigan Works Southeast in Howell. I am also a member of the Human Services Collaborative Body. I would like to share how it is a collaboration to have things like that in our newsletter. With Michigan Works specifically, because, you know, this is what I, I do for a living, day in and day out. First of all, I'd like to share, as I know a couple of you are on our board, and you know that Michigan Works Southeast works with all people without discrimination. That includes members of the LGBTQ. When customers come in, one of the first things that we do to help them with their training and employment is we identify their barriers to employment, which by that I mean obstacles to employment. And we help them remove them. We can't always remove the barrier, because I'm not a mental health professional, I'm not a social worker, I am not a lawyer. There are a lot of things that I cannot do, so I rely on our community partners. We collaborate with them, so that we can refer our customers to these other agencies to get the support and the resources and the assistance that they need. And so because of that, we do refer to agencies like the Livingston Diversity Council and Pride Alliance of Livingston, where they can get that support that I can't offer, I do employment and training. And so that partner, that partnership really does demonstrate that collaboration across all sorts of agencies and services, which the H, Human Services Collaborative Body really seeks to do. We, we seek for that collaboration, so that we can help the entire person, not just that little specific thing. I'm not out to just help them with employment, because I can get it, I can find you a job tomorrow, but if you don't have some of these other issues in your life solved, you're going to lose that employment, and then you're back to square one. So we work with the whole person, and that means referring to these agencies. I'd also like to echo what Connie Conklin said. We have a shortage of people working in our county, and I know it's a great county. I didn't grow up here, but I have lived here for, going on thirty years now, and I love Livingston County. And we have great things for people, it is a great place for people to move, to work, to live, but it makes it very difficult with resolutions like this, where people hear it and they say, oh, you're still a bigoted community. It's like, no, we're really not. So I do plead
Running out of time, ma'am.
Okay, I plead and ask that you vote no, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Janine Iyer.
Good evening, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, great. Janine Iyer, Genoa Township. I want to open my comments by thanking the Commissioners for your sacrificial service to our county. And thanks also to our county employees who do their jobs conscientiously, effectively, and with excellence, including our county sheriff's department. And I also want to thank all those who commented tonight on these various issues. I agree that only government committees and their publications should really focus on their mission and services. And, and not like things like Pride events. Prohibiting this kind of advertisement does not preclude services to the individuals that are participating in these events. To be sure, there are local newspapers to advertise these type of community events. This resolution simply charges the HS CB and other committees to refrain from being an advertisement publication not related to their specific services. And truly, I, I, I think that one's sexuality is a personal and private choice, and I don't think it's the government's job, or any government committee's job, to promote sexuality. I do not expect any government office, agency, or committee to advertise and promote my sexuality. And so it seems to me that this resolution simply puts up appropriate guardrails on government committee publications. If the resolution processed lacked a discussion between Commissioners and Health Services Collaborative Body committee members, that is another matter. But I, I do support Resolution six dash one hundred. And again, thank you, everyone, for your comments tonight, and thank you, Commissioners, for listening to all of us.
Thank you.
We have Dan Wallahan.
Yes, hi, Commissioner Dan Wallahan, Genoa Township. I am coming to, once again, thank our Commissioners for making this a Second Amendment county. Our homicide rate in this county is lower than the UK, lower than Australia, and lower than these, these other countries that the anti-Second Amendment folks like to use in support of restrictive firearm laws. Our neighbors, Democrat-controlled with anti-Second Amendment folks, have homicide rates five to ten times higher in most cases than Livingston County. Other counties should be like us, not the other way around. So it is nobody's business what's in my firearms cabinet. And I look at the resolution here, six, one. I would draft it a little bit differently, I think what should be prohibited is political organizations more than private organizations. But I will say this, discrimination against consenting adults for their personal lives is wrong, because it's government getting involved in things that's not their business. Not my business what people's personal lives are, any direction. And there should not be any discrimination on that. And that way, we should not be advertising political events on those issues, any direction. Period. That's my thoughts on that, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next we have Claire Donovan.
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name's Claire Donovan, I'm from Hamburg Township, and I also happen to be a part of the Livingston Diversity Council, and also a member of the Pride Alliance. I would like to clarify a couple things that were said earlier. I spent four hours at the event on Saturday, and I did not hear one discussion about sex, nor was there any mention of pedophilia at this event. I would like to invite anyone that has that misconception to come and attend our events and to learn a little more about what our group stands for, and most importantly, to learn a little bit more about the lives of these individuals. My take on Resolution one hundred is that I think it would be a bad decision and negative for our county. However, no matter what happens with this resolution, I think it's really important for everybody to realize that the resolution as a law or as a statement may take us backwards, but it is not going to take us backwards as a people. Our, our whole county is moving forward in embracing and really acknowledging the diversity in our county. And I think that no matter what, Resolution one hundred is not going to stop our progress, stop our enthusiasm, nor kindle any of the fires that we have, you know, started in this county. So I hope that the Commissioners will move forward with us, but if you don't, that's okay too, we know what to do, and, and we'll be moving and taking care of our people too, and everyone in Livingston County. And that's everyone with a capital E, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That is the last of the hands, Commissioner.
There, there is no one, there's no one else for a call to the public. We'll move on to the approval of minutes from the meeting of May twenty-second. The closed session minutes from May twenty-second. The work session minutes dated May thirty-first. Special meeting minutes dated May thirty-first. Closed session minutes also dated May thirty-first. Chair will enter Closed session minutes also dated May thirty first. Chair will entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
Move.
So move Gross.
Second, Fiani.
Moved and supported. Are there any corrections or changes to be made? All those in favor of the approval of these minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item ten is tabled items from a previous, from previous meetings. I don't believe we have any. So we'll move on to uh, item eleven, reports. Does anyone at the board have a, a report they want to make? Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to pay, uh, thank you to the Dream Commission. They took a better part of one of their days to show me a lot of the septic receiving stations and uh, the dams and uh, get a better knowledge of how these very vital systems in our county works. I just wanted to say thank you to, to thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one? All right, with that, we'll turn the rest of the next part of the meeting over to Commissioner Drick, who will deal with our resolutions for consideration. Commissioner?
Thank you. Agenda item number twelve begins with twelve A numbered two oh two three dash oh six dash zero nine one. It's a resolution to levy two thousand twenty-three allocation millage comes from Equalization and Sue Bostwick.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Fiani, support by Commissioner Gross, that we proceed. Are there any questions? Over and above the uh, matters that have been outlined in the paperwork.
Just a thought, uh, Sue, do we still have the lowest millage for county operations of all eighty-three counties?
I mean, everybody is levying the one this year because of the way um, the proposal, the amendment actually worked this year, um, because we had five percent. And it was rolled back to five percent on our taxable value. Hadly states, you use the uh, rate of inflation. And that's in our constitution. So we've had that um, analyzed by attorneys at the State Tax Commission. They agreed with it. And so we used the seven point nine percent that was actually our inflation rate on that. That means that three percent is the difference that we receive from um, properties becoming uncapped once it's sold. And it would take probably, I'd say probably thirty percent of the property selling for us to get up there to where we'd actually have a rollback this year, this last year. So that's our numbers. Everybody's seen about the same thing through the state. I get a copy of the surrounding counties. They're all seeing ones. Everybody I've talked to in Equalization, um, basically it's ones pretty much across the state. So I would say, yeah, we would still be the lowest.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay.
Any other further questions, comments? From any Commissioner? Seeing none, roll call vote. Kindly, ma'am, ma'am secretary.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number twelve, sub B numbered two oh two three dash oh six dash oh nine two. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Retirement Plan Advisory Committee, brought to us by the Board of Commissioners. May I have a motion?
Motion, Smith. Second sample. Thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Sample. You'll find this on page twenty. Any inquiry, question, comment, objection? Seeing none, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a nine to zero unanimous vote, so it passes. Item twelve C, it's numbered two oh two three dash oh six dash oh nine three. It's a resolution authorizing hiring and promotion discretion between three positions in the Veteran Services Department, brought to us by Veteran Services. May I have a motion?
So move Gross.
Support Helserman.
Moved by Commissioner Gross, supported by Commissioner Helserman. It's brought to us, uh, and the, excuse me, the author is uh, Veteran Services Ramon Baca. Ramon, would you like to comment if you're on?
Yes, sir. Can you gentlemen hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead. It was yours.
Thank you. Uh, to provide some background on this resolution, um, what brought to light was when I had a counselor who's in a level three position, uh, put in her two weeks' notice to depart to move on to a different chapter. And so I was surprised to find out that I actually had to come to the Board of Commissioners in order to open up the position for hiring purposes. And I think it primarily had to do with the fact of the position control numbers. Again, in this case, it's a level three who's departing the um, Veteran Services and the county altogether. And more likely than not, I'm going to hire a level one just because the person probably doesn't have all the same qualifications as that level three is departing. So with that said, in light of all that, um, I'm bringing this resolution so that in the future, if I have positions that open up, I can essentially hire when I need to versus having to come to um, the, this meeting once a month. Bear in mind, I have oversight from my Veteran Services Committee who's well aware of hiring, firing, and promotion. Um, second to that is there's another paragraph in there where it'll allow me flexibility to also promote when I need to, i.e. when these counselors have met all the merits of the position going from a level two or going from a, uh, from a level one to a level two, or that from a level two to a level three. So this is all in, in one lump sum. This essentially enables me to do my job more efficiently as I was trusted to do. Uh, again, with the oversight of my Veterans Committee versus having to come to you gentlemen. Not that I don't like talking, gentlemen, I do. However, for the matters of hiring, firing, promoting, this allows me that option to do so. And um, bear in mind that there is select few departments in this county who have these tier levels, these ladders such as I do. And there's another department who's already brought this to you and has been approved. Uh, so pending any of your questions, hopefully that gave you uh, enough background to make your decision.
You mentioned a different department. What was that?
The Building Department, sir.
Building Services? You have somebody down here. Health Department? Thank you. Commissioner Nakagiri, did you have your hand up to proceed?
I, I was going to clarify what uh, our financial officer said. It's the Health Department. There, there is, was confusion regarding the Building Department. I had actually chatted with the finance officer uh, to uh, get clarification. I chatted with her, you know, after the committee meeting and prior to today, so.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, I wanted to let my colleagues know I had a extensive conversation with the Director Baca, whom uh, I think the world of. I think he's done a marvelous job. I have um, high confidence in him. And um, but I called him to inform him that I was leaning against the resolution um, and for the following reasons, um, that the policy that's in place today, in my opinion, has served the county well to um, keep on top of headcount. And uh, with um, staffing being about sixty to sixty-six percent of our cost, I think it's important that we have a high degree of attention. When I say high degree of attention, we have uh, intentionally put out there uh, many hurdles, not, not necessarily implemented by this Board of Commissioners, but they, they've been in place for years and years. And in my opinion, that has served the county well. We have a, a situation here where uh, as Ms., as Director Baca explained to me, he, he, he let out a timeline of what he saw in terms of, you know, uh, being able to fill the positions that he needs filled to be get, you know, to get them hired, to get them trained, to get them some cross-training time and to get them to the um, Veteran Service Officers Training that he desires. And I, 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 I don't have any disagreement with that. Um, my disagreement is that we're changing a policy that's been in place successfully for years for a specific set of circumstances in a period where we have a great Veteran Ser-, uh, Service Department Director. I'm not sure that it's wise to, to set the policy when we've got a star performer. The policy should be in um, set for, I'll say, a, a typical performer, an average performer. And so I, there's, therein lies my concern. I, well, you know, h- having thought about this, um, you know, I would um, be comfortable uh, putting a timeframe on this, saying, hey, after whatever, uh, af- after this series of hires, that we go back to the normal policy. Um, and um, so I, anyway, that's my opinion. It, it um, kind of meshes in to a little bit to what Commissioner Helserman said in committee, although it, it differs because um, my desire would be to um, you know, let Mr., let Director Baca have this exemption, but then as soon as he gets his hires, that uh, we, the exemption goes away for the future.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comment? Commissioner Helserman?
I am in favor of this. I, I raised quite a few uh, objections or questions before. Uh, and what has been uh, added with uh, concurrence of Human Resources and Veterans Affairs? I think that this department is a little bit different because they have their own board that's really more hands-on. Um, and so I don't mind this. And it seems to me that these positions are so much alike that it really is not very. Our policy in this particular case is more tying the hands of the veterans. So I'm, I, I favor this. I will be voting for this.
Commissioner Deaton?
Thank you, Chair. I'm uh, in, in favor of this as well. I um, I, I see that uh, Director Baca has done a phenomenal job. And I've dealt with uh, the last director as well as a veteran. And um, in the resolution, the last therefore, he's already have oversight from Human Resources and the uh, Veterans Affairs Committee. So he's already has two oversights. So um, that, that's my two cents on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Thank you. Um, I have to agree with my colleague, Commissioner Nakagiri's comments concerning Director Baca. I think when he took over a Veteran Services Division, uh, since then, he's done an outstanding job. And if this resolution's going to help him to do an even more outstanding job, I'm all in favor of it. So I would, I definitely am going to support this resolution.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner?
As I'm the last, it was my impression when I read the resolution for the first time that we were going from a oversight position as Board of, Board of Commissioners as electeds. And we're giving that oversight up to unelecteds, the Human Service, Human Resources and the Veterans Affairs Committee. And I had a problem. I did not think that, I do not think we ought to be giving up our position as a check and balance because we're the people that get the call to the public. We're the people that get the emails. We're the people that get stopped in the grocery store and get told what we ought to be doing to our face. And it's a matter of checks and balances, in my opinion. If a compromise offer came from uh, Commissioner Nakagiri, I think we'd be well-served to put this on a trial basis and have a sunset of, say, six months and then come back and see if it uh, was well-done in those six months. I would support a sunset of two years. Six months is not any time to, you know, this will not be proved one way or the other in six months. If it sunsets in two years, I would support that. I think that that's because if it works well, uh, we can redo it in two years. If it doesn't, or it causes too much friction among other departments, they can withdraw it. So, but I would support a two-year, two-year sunset. That might be a way to uh, keep our checks and balances available. Commissioner Nakagiri?
I'd like to move to amend the resolution, um, adding another, therefore be it resolved to have this um, sunset to, in two years.
Support Helserman. Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Nakagiri, supported by Commissioner Helserman, that a amendment be added as an additional, be it further resolved, that the authority given by the resolution sunsets in two years. Comment, question, objection? Any Commissioner wish to speak to the amendment? I'll close then discussion, go into roll call, no, excuse me, uh, a voice vote. All those in favor of the amendment to add a sunset of two years, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
I hear a eight to one voice vote. The amendment is passed. Now we go to the original resolution as amended. Anyone wish to make any further comment, objection, discussion? Seeing none, I'll close that and we'll go to a voice vote for the resolution as amended. All those in favor, kindly say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nine to zero is what I hear, Madam Secretary. Moving on the agenda, then we go to twelve letter D. It's number two oh two three dash oh six dash oh nine four. It's a resolution authorizing the replacement of two overhead garage doors at our transportation complex operated by Letts. May I have a motion?
Move it. Support Helserman.
It's been moved by Commissioner Domas, supported by Commissioner Helserman. Uh, Director Kellogg, have you any comment?
Uh, yeah, yes, Commissioners. Thank you and good evening. Um, I'll just give a quick recap. Um, our uh, overhead garage doors at the transportation complex are over twenty, or almost twenty-five years old, nineteen ninety-nine. Um, and they've uh, really began to give us problems this year. We had a, a period of time earlier this year where we did, uh, we had to make half a dozen service calls in, in the, uh, in the frame of a, of a week. So um, it's, it's past their time. I believe they're past their useful life. Um, so we uh, were able to piggyback onto the EMS bid um, that was approved a couple of months ago um, for essentially the same thing. Um, and these, the replacements would be high-speed roll-up doors, uh, which would not only um, uh, you know, give us replacements for these old doors, but also increase the uh, operating speed, which would be very welcome. Um, I, I sent out some information. Uh, and it, it looks like these new ones will be about three times as fast. So um, uh, and then as far as the, the funding, it, uh, the roughly a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars is the total cost um, to be funded by a section fifty-three thirty-nine uh, formula, uh, formula grant. Um, and that is not to be confused with the, with the program we applied for, for the Brighton facility. That's the discretionary version. Um, this is our, our annual formula apportionment, um, that, that were um, apportioned by Um, this is our, our annual formula apportionment, um, that that were um, apportioned by um. Congress every, every year, and it's roughly a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, so. Um, I think this project would be uh, well worth it, um, costs are covered by grant funds, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners? Any questions, comment, objection? Director Kellogg, thank you for getting back with me so quickly on my question. I'll relate to the, I'll relate to my fellow commissioners that I asked. I understand it's coming out of grant funding, is there going to be any left after it's over? Twenty-three grand, so that's a good thing. All those, uh, I'll close comment now, we'll go into a roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Domus.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Commissioner Domus. Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve dash E. It's number two oh two three dash oh six dash oh nine five. It's a resolution authorizing a budget amendment and acceptance of a grant. From Trinity Health, Ann Arbor and Livingston. Investing in our communities to provide equipment for the Livingston County Community Paramedic Program. It's brought to us by Emergency Medical Services, Director Feltposh, may I get a motion?
Move Gross.
Second sample.
Moved by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Director Feltposh, you have the floor.
Uh, this is just a grant to buy a couple pieces of equipment, we need to really help us in the relaunch of our community paramedic program, which we. Began back on January first, uh, we found this grant opportunity through Trinity Health. Applied uh, with the authorization from the County Administrator and. Were awarded the grant, uh, twenty-four thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars, um, will really help us keep that program. Rolling along and enhance some of the services we can offer, so.
Thank you. Any comment, question, objection? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're to twelve F on the hit parade. It is number two oh two three dash oh six dash oh nine six. It's a resolution authorizing the EMS Department. To apply for the State of Michigan Bureau of Emergency Preparedness EMS and Systems of Care Grant. Uh, letter and numbered RFP dash EMS WD dash two oh two four. Again, may I have a motion?
So move Helsnerman.
Second.
Moved, moved by Commissioner Helsnerman, seconded by Commissioner Fiani, Director Feltposh, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, this is actually round two of a grant, we did not apply for around one because the language was very vague and we really didn't know what they were looking for. Um, in round one, they actually funded paramedic programs to help. Enhance the number of paramedics that we can get through classes, uh, we're simply applying this time for requesting permission to apply. For funding to cover the tuition costs of the paramedic programs that we host here in Livingston County, uh, the grant period will allow us. The grant period will allow us to cover three consecutive classes for a total of three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The max grant award is three hundred and fifty, if we were awarded all of it, so. Um, no financial impact related to the department at all, this simply helps us fund the tuition for the students to help get more paramedics.
Commissioners, any questions, comment, objection? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're on to item twelve G on the agenda, two oh two three dash oh six dash oh nine seven. It's a resolution authorizing the creation of the Fiber Optic Construction Fund and the Fiber Optic Special Revenue Fund. Brought to us by our Treasurer, may I have a motion?
Support Gross, or motion Gross.
Support Smith.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross moved, Commissioner Smith seconded. Ms. Nash, you have the floor if you wish.
Happy to answer any questions, we went over it, uh, at General Government. Uh, we're creating, the resolution is creating two funds, one for the construction of the fiber optic system, which will be funded. Uh, largely by the ARPA dollars. And then a special re- a second fund, a special revenue fund that will record the ongoing revenues and expenses of the operations of the system.
Any questions, objection, comment, analysis, Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, this is just a comment, uh, uh, thank you for um, our Treasurer and our uh, Director of IT. For forwarding this resolution, I I think it is well-thought-out, well-crafted, it's very forward-looking. Um, one of the things it does, and it would share with my colleagues on the board for those that may not know. You know, um, a number of years ago, long before I got on the board, um, there was a Homeland Security Grant that was used to. Um, install the fiber optic network that we have today, and um. One of the problems that, um, in my view, that there was no um. Funding associated or or asked for from users, um, the various users in the county to um. For repair maintenance, therefore the county is left holding the the bill, and when the um. System becomes eventually obsolete, the switches and and what whatnot, it's the county that's on the hook. With the resolution that is put forth, there's a way to accrue funds so that uh, we can um. Pay for the, the future upgrades and the repairs, and I I think this serves the county uh, very nicely, and I think. You and Director Toby.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Helsnerman?
Uh, I think that this does well for uh, what we have already approved. I think uh, if the county gets further into phase three and four, which uh, it looks at this point that that. May not happen, if we go further, I would favor an enterprise fund. Uh, instead of a revenue fund, so, but the size we are, I think this is fine.
Any further commissioner wish to speak?
Seeing none, I'll close the discussion, we'll go into roll call vote.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome, thank you, we're at. We're at uh, twelve H on page three. It's uh, numbered two oh two three dash oh six dash oh nine eight. It's a resolution authorizing and concurring with an advance from the Delinquent Tax Revolving Funds. To Marion and Genoa County Drainage District for the purpose of paying preliminary costs, may I have a motion?
Move Helsnerman.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Helsnerman, support by Commissioner Deaton. Treasurer Nash, you're associated with this, you may proceed.
Uh, well, I'm happy to answer any questions, again, we went through it at General Government, it's a two-year loan from the Delinquent Tax Revolving Fund, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, it saves the uh, costs for the landowners within that district are going to save on the, the financing costs. Um, the Delinquent Tax Revolving Fund will earn the same interest rate as it would for a two-year investment outside of the county, and um. In in our opinion, it's a win-win, uh, Delinquent Tax Revolving Funds earns the stated interest, we save the property owners. Within that drainage district, um, and the drainage district can move on with their project.
Any commissioner have any questions, uh, analysis?
I have a, uh, related questions.
Proceed.
I see that in our claims and payables that we're doing a lot of giving money to the townships for their. Tax taxes that they have not received as of yet.
Well, the delinquent tax payout.
Yeah, so we are making all of these individual uh, municipalities whole at this point.
Mm-hmm.
And then the money that's coming back, that will come back into this fund is what we're bower, borrowing from. Uh, to pay these uh. Uh, to fund these projects.
That's correct.
So, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gross.
Um, Ms. Nash, uh, the point that my colleague, uh, Commissioner Helsnerman raised. In, in looking at the payables, um, yeah, a total of eight million dollars that we're paying out. Um, but some of that money is going to jurisdictions outside of Livingston County. Ingham County, Oakland County, Washington, uh, several school districts outside of the county, and I'm. I'm assuming that's because in those jurisdictions, there's property owners that had delinquent situations, is that correct?
Yeah, so there are some Livingston County taxpayers who are on certain boundaries. Wherein they will have perhaps an Ingham ISD rather than a Livingston ISD, or they may have Oakland Community College. So, um, what we are paying out are the delinquent taxes on a Livingston County tax bill. And we're making those taxing authorities whole.
Um, and I'm not sure this is appropriate question for you, but. How many, do you have any idea how many parcels we've got around the perimeter of Livingston County that that are affected?
Madam Clerk?
We, we do the ballot programming, so we know how many voters approximately, but it varies by district, so. You are welcome to stop over in the Elections Division and I will show you some of that information.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Joe. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other commissioner, Commissioner Nakagiri? Um, you, you, this is a two-year note, are, I assume we're getting repaid in full in two years, is that?
Yes, that would be the, and the drain commissioners here as well, but that's the intent, so the intent is over the two-year course, they finish up the preliminary costs. And will have um, the whole project then estimated for which then they go sell. The large bond, so it might be a million and a half dollar project, they can sell and issue the bonds for that project. And this small loan gets repaid by those bonds within the two-year timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner? The resolution and your memo both uh, refer to a petition on this one from the City of Howell. Do you have that? The petition.
You're on deck.
Yeah, the, the petition was executed by uh, the City of Howell and um. You know, the, the drain office does things, you know, because of the, the statute quite a bit differently, where instead of being allocated money and then doing the work. Um, we use a revolving fund to do all the preliminaries and um, and initiate the project. And then we bond later for the cost, and we actually don't receive that money back for sometimes a year, year and a half. When it gets on to the, um, on to the rolls, so we kind of do it backwards, and with all the projects we have going with ARPA. That revolving fund that we utilize to do that preliminary, that's been um. Been taken down where, uh, if we go over that, we're essentially using, you know, general fund money, so. That's the reason for the advance to make sure that we don't, we don't end up doing that.
But the petition is part of the statutory process.
Yes.
And establishing the drainage.
It is.
And the petition was signed by the City Council in full, a majority of the council?
Yes, it just has to pass uh, by a simple majority.
Majority voted City Council.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I understand down the memorandum that the district consists of three thousand four hundred fifty-two parcels owned by. Two thousand seven hundred forty-five different landowners, and the same exact numbering.
Oh, that's.
Is on the next one.
That's my mistake.
And so I figured there was a bit of a scrivener area, error there.
Yes.
What, what, what's the real numbers?
Uh, the, the current resolution is correct, it's the next resolution that speaks of Marion number three. I'm told that is six hundred and ninety-eight. Um, I'm sorry, seven hundred and seventy-six parcels, six ninety-eight landowners. And that special assessment will be different, I don't have that exact dollar for that one, but that is my mistake on the memo. My apologies.
So, the City of Howell, by majority of vote at their council meeting. Decided that these uh, landowners ought to be. Assessed more money than they're paying today in order to have their uh, drainage improved.
Well, they don't, they don't uh, determine that in that resolution. Um, what they're doing is simply petitioning, uh, and so like many of the statutes that we work with. Um, which, which allows you, you know, certain number of residents to um, to petition for a job to be done. The local unit can, can also petition as well, um, and so what they've done is petition to start that process. And then we've gone through those hearings, um, so. There's a process we have to go through, just like any other thing to determine the feasibility of the project, and then hearing on the special assessment role.
And is there a time where the taxpayers can come in and complain they don't want to have an assessment?
Yes, we have to do that on every petition project, yes.
So that's in the future that there's an objection by the actual landowners, uh, objection available?
Right, correct.
And that hasn't happened yet?
No.
So we're not voting to create any dollar assessment here?
No.
And on the one we're voting on, the potential estimate, I get the estimate part. Is either a dollar all the way up to two hundred and sixty-six a year? I get it, but that's at a different hearing at a different body.
Correct.
Is that City Howell again, Council or one of the?
No, that's through our office, it's like in any drain, the, either the people or the local unit may initiate that process, and then the hearings are held. Through our office according to statute.
Okay, that you, you, I got it. Thank you for clearing that up, thank you. Have my comments generated any questions, comments, objection, go ahead.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um. What is the likelihood or possibility that um. The landowners, property owners would say, no, we don't want to do this, have they already given some indication that they're, they want to? I'll say tax themselves for this?
Well, it, it, as in any other process, it's uh, you know, it's a hearing, it's determined by a three-member board. Uh, Board of Determination, difference whether based on that testimony, whether they're to go forward with the project. Um, and if they determine that's practicable to move forward with the process, um, then there are provisions in the statute for. Um, uh, for appealing that, and then, you know, the second part to that is, um, like in any project. After the practicability is the hearing on the special assessment, and similarly, there are provisions for. Somebody, somebody may be in favor of the project, but may not agree with the apportionment, and they can also. Uh, utilize those provisions to um, you know, to appeal that decision, so. They, they do have, and we rarely have seen that, I think I've only seen that. Twice in the last twenty-five years, so.
Any other further comment, suggestion, question? I'm reading simple voice. I'm reading simple voice vote. Thank you. All those in favor kindly say aye. Any opposed? Nine to zero, uh, oh nine eight passes. We're on to two oh two three dash oh six oh nine nine. It's a resolution authorizing and concurring with an advance from the delinquent tax revolving funds to Marion number three Drainage District for the purpose of paying preliminary costs. May I have a motion?
Move, Helsman.
Thank you, is there a second?
Support, Nakagiri.
Thank you, moved by Health, Commissioner Helsman, supported by Commissioner Nakagiri. Extremely similar to the last one.
Yeah.
Except now it's a petition from landowners, not City of Howell. Do you have the petition with you? Can you tell me something about it? Is it a petition of three people? Is it a petition of six hundred?
Petition with me, no, um, but, but this is one that Marion Township, I believe, initiated, um, through, uh, resolution, and the reason being is because we had, uh, ARPA funds approved for this as well, I believe. So, um, we sat down with many of the local units to go over, you know, kind of the drains that were, were most problematic, and then basically they told us which ones, if any, they were willing to petition for.
But we're not using ARPA here, we're using delinquent? That's just the difference.
Right, for the preliminary, although this, this may be on our list for ARPA, we would have to go and request that, though.
This is the preliminary fund, the preliminary?
Yeah, the, all the preliminaries, the engineering, and all that good stuff.
And again, there'll be a Drain Commissioner hearing, or maybe even two, to get to the actual assessment that the people would vote on themselves.
Yeah, so, and we've already had those hearings.
Got it. And they've, they've taxed themselves, so to speak, already?
Well, uh, probably if you asked each and every one of them, they wouldn't say that they were thrilled with the assessment, but.
And I'm not saying the thrill part, I get it.
But they, but there, there, we've gone through the, that hearing process, there's an awful lot of support for it, there's a lot of people, it's an old drain, just like most of ours in the county, and, and, uh, with more development, they're seeing more flooding pressures, so, but we've gotten through that process.
Thank you. Have my questions or comments, uh, listed any further question or comment by Commissioner? Mister, Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, this is just for my education here, so the, um, yeah, I've, I've heard, you know, comment similar to your Drain Commissioner that, uh, you know, you've got development in the county, you get more pressure on the drains, you, and, um, is that, is there, uh, funding assessed to the developer that, uh, helps alleviate those costs? Because you, we're putting in this new development, it, um, I'll say, uh, causes needs to change the drain or increase the drain capacity, I'm assuming because you got more runoff off of asphalt. So anyway, is, is there, is there a mechanism for recouping that?
Not, not in this state. It really is, um, uh, i- 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 we see that every day where you have development move in. Now, um, when there is a developer that moves in, if there isn't capacity in that drain, then we will typically, um, uh, talk with that developer, say, we, we don't have capacity in here, you've got to fund some type of improvement. So i- i- you know, to some extent, you know, kind of talking about the impact fee in a way, but this, this state fundamentally is still the same way it was in the eighteen hundreds, you can come and you can build, and somebody else gets your water, and everybody pays that's a recipient of that water. So, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's not the, the fairest of, of processes, other than everybody that benefits shares in the, in the apportionment, which certainly is, is fair. But those impacts we see each and every day, and, um, there, the, the developments, the developers certainly do not pay, um, their fair share of, uh, drainage impacts, and you can say the same for roads as well in this state.
Thank you. Any further comment, question? Commissioner Sample?
What develops the range from, from, say, eleven to twenty-five hundred?
The special?
The special, the, the range?
Oh, it, well, usually, and in rural areas, it's strictly by, um, by size of the property. So somebody that has, you know, ten acres is going to receive a larger assessment since they're, uh, producing more runoff than somebody with a half acre. So that's really why you see a, a big, um, you know, range in terms of the assessments. And also then in some districts, I don't think here, but some districts, we look, uh, where you may have some commercials, we look at imperviousness. If you have, if, if you have forest, you're generating less water than if you're a Walmart with a, with a asphalt parking lot. So sometimes we get into that, where we look at imperviousness, slopes, soils, things like that.
So, so is it specific to acreage, or?
Yeah, in this case, I believe it's all acreage.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it was just a question. Thanks.
Any further questions, comment? Seeing none, I'll close the discussion. This is a voice vote relative to Marion number three. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Vote is nine to zero, it passes unanimously. We're on to item twelve sub J, it's number two oh two three dash oh six dash one zero zero. It's a resolution prohibiting appointed boards and committees from promoting events and activities which are outside the scope of their mission. Uh, it's brought to us by Board of Commissioners, Mr. Nakagiri. Can I have a motion?
Move the resolution, Nakagiri.
Support, Helsman.
It's been moved by Commissioner Nakagiri and supported by Commissioner Helsman. This is open discussion time. Does anybody wish to discuss? Mr. Gross, excuse me, Commissioner Gross?
Thank you. I, um, I first saw this resolution when it was presented to the Personnel Committee last week, and I'm not a member of that committee, so I couldn't, uh, uh, speak to it in terms of the vote of that committee. Over since then, I've been reading it when I've had a chance, I was out of town for a few days, but, um, it strikes me that, uh, that perhaps, uh, we've got the cart before the horse in this situation. I think, I think this resolution, uh, well-intended and, and has some, um, meriting points. We, we, we don't have a good process for monitoring activities of the various boards. Livingston County has a total of thirty-nine different boards and committees that people are appointed to, and there's well over three hundred people that are appointed to those boards for varying periods of time. And we literally have no follow-up at all. All of these have been initiated, uh, uh, supported, established, whatever terminology you want to use, by Livingston County and this Board of Commissioners at various periods of time, not necessarily us individually, uh, sitting here. And while I hate to kick something down the road, uh, the proverbial can, uh, I, I think we need to establish a process of how to interact, have a relationship with members of the boards, the various boards. We have an oversight responsibility because all of these are under the umbrella of Livingston County, reviewed as part of Livingston County. And what, uh, was the impetus for this resolution was something that appeared on the Livingston County website. Wasn't a separate independent website, it was our website. And so by being in that location for publication, that, in the eyes of the public, this, we're supporting this and advocating for it. And I'm sure that there are some members of this board that may feel one way or another about it, um, but I feel that we're at a point in time that this is not time-sensitive, but we need to have more interaction, more discussion, um, possibly, uh, in the case of the HSCB, which has been referenced quite a bit earlier this evening. I, I believe it would be appropriate for some members of this Board of Commissioners to meet with the HSCB Executive Board, if that, or Executive Committee, if, if there is such a, an animal. You know, one of the things that's troubled me about this is that I didn't know that HSCB had a newsletter. I've never seen one. I don't know if it's published and printed anyplace, if it's all online. Uh, I was surprised to find out that there's been a newsletter published for several years. And, and I'm, I'm the Board of Commissioners representative to the HSCB, and I have to apologize to Amy, I have not been attending via Zoom, I've had schedule conflicts unfortunately, but I don't recall ever hearing any discussion about what goes into the newsletter, and I don't know what, um, protocol is, is in place, if any. So I have a lot of questions about this whole thing, and accordingly, I would like to have this item tabled to enable some of us to do some more investigating, have more conversation, and at some point, hopefully in the near future, make an educated determination. So I, I make a, a motion to table this resolution.
I hear the motion to table, is there a second?
I support.
Commissioner Smith supports the motion to table. I'm relatively certain there's no discussion, we just vote.
That is correct.
There's no discussion to table to a certain, certain point.
Or end up some day.
So, for example, Robert throws an order, call for it, if, if there's no date set, then it has to be taken up at the next meeting, it's not taken up at the next meeting, then it actually got, it, it fails, it, it concludes it, so, or it can be taken up later during this meeting, but understanding the purpose of the tabling.
Commissioner Gross?
Uh, if I may, I, I would, uh, as, as part of this process, I would suggest that, uh, a representative committee of, of the board to meet with Mr. Heims and, and Ms. Johnston, and, and if there is an HSCB Executive Committee, meet with them, hopefully within the next few weeks, and, and see if we can't have, uh, uh, discussion that will lead to, uh, a better understanding by all parties.
I, I'm hearing what you're saying, you're a little off track. I think you should be limited to the fact that you either tell us a date certain, or you go with no date certain, and you're subject to what Commissioner Fiani thinks, uh, what Roberts say. So do you wish to?
I would, I would be hopeful that we could, um, take another look at this, sixty days at the latest.
And Commissioner Smith, now that you hear that amendment, do you still wish to support?
Yes.
Thank you. Hearing both of those, then, that the, uh, motion to table is to rehear sixty days at the latest, and it's been made by Commissioner Gross and seconded by Commissioner Smith, we'll do a voice vote of, uh, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
I'm unable to determine.
I'm, I'm a no.
Raise your hands real quick, and I'll, I'll know.
Uh, I would like to request a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. That request is granted. Thank you.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helsman?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
No.
Commissioner Backin here?
No.
Commissioner Brett?
No.
Commissioner Dean?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes. No.
Motion to table fails.
Now we're back then to the original motion. Any, and we're, I'm going to reopen discussion if anyone wishes to, uh, uh, comment, observe, question. Commissioner Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. The, uh, I, I just wanted to go into, you know, I, I supported the, the reason to post movement to table, um, and like, and I, and I don't want anybody to think that I'm a, really opposed to the purpose of this resolution. This is a resolution that came in very quickly, um, and, and I don't think anyone thinks it's well-worded, and I don't mean offense by that, but we really, this is a policy issue, and this is a policy board, and this is something that should have organically come to us through administration. I think because of timing and, and reactions or whatever, it didn't have a, have a chance to do that. But normally policies are, are set, uh, by, it may be the, the directors of departments, it may be through administration, it may be through Finance or Treasurer's Office, and then they're brought to us for final review, maybe some editing, uh, modification amendment, and approval. Um, this came to us, uh, direct from the board, and that, that's always tough, uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm not critical of the intention at all. I think it's important to have guidelines on county communications. I really do. I, I use the example of, uh, the bank across the street and how there's certain things that we just cannot support, regardless of how, uh, important or well-natured they are. There's, there's some things that I, as Representative of the Bank, may not support on behalf of the Bank. I'm personally willing to do whatever I can for any given cause. We, as a county, have to have similar guidelines, and we're kind of, I guess in a way, I'm, we're obviously going to move forward with a vote tonight on this, but, but I'm going to ask our administration and our directors to, to look at their communications. It is a lot, thirty-nine, right, thirty-nine? And you're right, we can't, we can't keep eyes on all things, nor, nor should we have to, because we have a great staff, we have great oversight, we have great directors. I, I think our administration is second to none. So we shouldn't have to. So I, I guess I'm calling upon our, uh, electeds and our, uh, department heads to review policies, especially regarding, i- in this case, communication, outward communication, and see if it needs amending, see if it needs more guidelines and rails, and bring it back to us, uh, because going through it like this is a really bad way to govern. This is not good governance. We're going to move forward tonight with a vote, whether we should or not, um, but, but Commissioner Nakagiri's intentions were, were questioned. So I'm going to go off on a tangent here, too, and I'm a little bit appalled at the judgment issued upon him. I find him to be an incredibly honorable man, and I think that while there's oftentimes he and I may not agree on an issue or two, I am absolutely certain no one has worked harder, uh, for, for what he believes is the best interest of this county than Commissioner Nakagiri. And so I, I ask you to refrain from the judgment. Um, I certainly understand that I have the same, a similar experience in my family. There is issues of, of same-sex attraction, there's issues of, of, uh, this, this gender, uh, fluidity, whatever we call it. Um, I don't understand it, I'm not subject to it. I'm not subject to it. But, but I don't, I don't think anyone up here is casting a stone that way. I really don't. So I hope you take that with the sincerity it is intended with. If public's feelings were hurt, if there is a cloud that exists, then, then I beg the pardon of anyone injured by this. But it certainly was not a deliberate attack by this board on anyone or any group. This is a policy. And again, this is not, is the, this is not the best way to do policy, but it's in front of us. Everyone's had their say, or will have their say, and we'll move forward. But I, I do ask, if I can kick the next ball over the fence, please review your communication policies. And if they need modification, review them at administration, and if they need to come to us, by all means, please bring them to us. Thank you.
Any further comment, question, observation? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've said this in the past, that, you know, citizens may not agree with me. You know, the one thing that I'll always do is explain, I owe it to the people on the, my rationale on why I did what I did. That is an obligation, in my view, of anybody who holds elective office. You know, you're never gonna, when you hold elective office, you're never going to make a hundred percent of the people happy. So there'll be some people that agree, some people disagree. But the one thing that is, in my view, as I just said, owed to the people, is, is an explanation. So I intend, and I will, I will deliver that this evening. So before I get started, I want to make a comment on, you know, the media today. Some people might call it fake news media. I'm pretty much in line with that description. So I happened to read at least the headline of a podcast that said, Livingston Commissioners to Vote on Resolution Opposing Promotion of Pride Events. I, I think that it was grossly inaccurate and misrepresented this resolution. It isn't, and it was done to gin up hate. And it was done to gin up public opinion, and it was done to sell more newspapers. The, this resolution is not singling out pride events that, that I, I'll elaborate on that further. This resolution, you know, I don't read every newsletter issued by the Livingston County Human Services collaborative body, but I, I happened to read this one. And it was, I was surprised. So I, in that it covered, it was promoting these events, three events of the Pride Alliance and the Livingston Diversity Council, which in, which I still assert that these are private entities, these are private organizations. And if they want to promote their events, they are welcome to, but they are not welcome to use under the banner of Livingston County. And if, if, if you were to read, and I'm sure many of you have read the quarterly newsletter, they had other events in there that were within the mission of the HSCB. For example, I'm looking at it right now, there was a Spotlight on Hunger Council. There was coaching for caregivers sponsored by the Area Agency on Aging. There was an event hosted by Ascension that was a continuing education defining effective treatment. There was events related to Great Start Livingston for children. There was a Ascension Brighton Center Recovery for Children Addiction. In my mind, those are clearly within the mission of the HSCB. In my resolution, in my first whereas, I did some research. I, and I asked for the resolution that was passed to form the HSCB. And I'm, and my resolution has a quote from there, and the quote says, Livingston Human HSCB started in nineteen eighty-nine and was officially recognized as the county multipurpose collaborative body by State and County Board of Commissioners in nineteen ninety-five. The HSCB is comprised of twenty-six appointed members that work together to coordinate health and human services across systems. The as a commissioner who was, served one year on the HSCB, you know, that, what I just stated, and what I was told when I was on the HSCB about coordinating care between social services agencies, making sure that we're getting the most bang for the buck, that we're doing the best we can with the resources that we have, and we're not duplicating effort, and we are not, we were trying to minimize gaps in coverage. In my mind, the events that were advertised for the, the three events in question have, have nothing to do, in my view, with the coordinating health and human services across systems. That, that's my opinion. And, and I didn't think it was appropriate for county to be with its, that these events be promoted under the banner, banner of the county, just like I wouldn't be supportive of the county promoting NRA events, or the county supporting or promoting Proud Boys events. I, we, we shouldn't be in the, as, as a governing body in the business of promoting private events. And I'm strongly opposed to promoting events of any type for any private entity. I want to comment, and then I'll relinquish the floor. I thank you for your patience. It was mentioned earlier today that I was invited to the Pride, one of the Pride events, and I, I didn't go. And I want to let the person who invited me know that I'm happy to have that discussion. However, you know, when I'm called and invited on Friday, and that doesn't give a lot of lead time, and, and plus, it's unlikely that even if I had enough lead time, that I would, I, I am just not into the Pride Parade. If you want to have a discussion about it, that's fine. I'm happy to have that discussion. But as it was on the weekend, I am still working on building a fence for my wife's garden, and it's for her birthday, and that has far more priority for me. So anyway, that's why, but I'm, I'm open to discuss points of view with anybody, even those that don't agree with me, because that is part of the job. So anyway, I that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I wanted to, you know, at least say a little bit of how the way I voted as well. Like to bring it up that we have a lot of resolutions that come for us, and it's great to see different parts of our community come in here and see the swath of, of, of information we have to take in and try to digest. I wanted to thank Lisa from Genoa for bringing up, you know, veterans. I'm a veteran, and that's right, we only do get one day, we don't get a month. And I think we're probably one of the only groups that volunteer to write a blanket of freedom for all of you. So, you know, think about that. I want to thank Adam. I think you mentioned you were in the military, and, you know, for me being in the Navy, I served in many different cities around the, the world that the LGBT communities got a little bit more population than they do here in Livingston County. I, I was stationed in San Francisco, and I was down in Key West and, and some other places, and, you know, I had no problems. So I, I wanted to say that I appreciate Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Smith for proposing that sixty days so that I could learn more about this. As I, when I thought about this, and I thought, I go, it's, it's pretty cut and clear that, you know, the county shouldn't be promoting any group, anything from NRA or from the LGBTQ on our, on our sites, and that's the way I looked at it. So, you know, I think my constituents, thank you for being here for OCL and Genoa and, and inciting on both sides, but I wanted you to hear how I feel about that situation.
Thank you. No, ma'am. Ma'am, you're not allowed to talk. Thank you. Ma'am? That's the end of it. That's the end of it, ma'am. Ma'am, you must be silent. Any other commissioner we should talk? Commissioner Helsner.
My family moved to Livingston County in nineteen fifty-three. In nineteen fifty-three, things were quite a bit different in our country and quite a bit different in Livingston County. The there's an ancient principle called the Golden Rule. And that Golden Rule is one of the guiding principles of of husband of our country. And the question, my, my question is, you know, I've heard today, Mr. Chairman, I heard people talk about progress. Okay? Since nineteen fifty-three, there, in I sixty-four, there was a Civil Rights Act that that didn't have, that didn't allow discrimination against certain people. Okay? So in other words, they asked our country to be colorblind, sex-blind. You know, there was some categories. But the Golden Rule didn't change. The Golden Rule doesn't change. The Golden Rule doesn't progress. And when society has to progress, the question is, are we progressing to the Golden Rule? Or are we progressing to something that is only in our minds? Well, nineteen sixty-four, the Civil Rights Act, and it had many good things for our country. The more modern way of looking at this is diversity, equity, inclusion. And diversity, equity, inclusion says you must look at the differences. That's against the law. It is against the civil rights law to hire somebody because they are X. And when when there is always a value. You know, there is good and there's bad. And, and our society has, in large part, cast that off because we talk about separation of church and state. Well, we can't separate the state from the Golden Rule. And it just seems to me that this discussion has kind of devolved, you know, and it, it was started with this, the events that were in this newsletter. I agree with Commissioner Smith that that, you know, with how his principle, I tried to never make a policy for a particular thing, because I figured I'd always live to regret it. Because there's no policy that this board has ever made, or that they just CB has ever made, that at some point is ridiculous. Some point it goes off the track anyways. So I, I think in that regard, but I, I look at this, this resolution, and this resolution does not, it, it does say, it's a whereas, that this was not in their mission, but it only says, do not do things that are not in their mission. I think that that's what is that question here? And in my mind, I think this is a fine one, but I think that the Livingston County that I came into, my family moved into, this probably wouldn't have been a matter of discussion. Because the Golden Rule is is still the rule, you know?
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Any other? Commissioner Sample.
I think that this resolution is fairly simpler than everybody's trying to make it out to be. It basically says that we shouldn't be using the county dollars to, and to publicize private events for private parties. It doesn't, it's not a, an attack on any faction or belief or any of the other things. The government shouldn't be, the government, the county government, any of that stuff shouldn't be using tax dollars to promote anything far right or far left or in the middle. Should stay neutral on those events. And I think that's what this resolution does. Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yeah, I wanted to, I had forgot to offer an amendment in the, in the Personnel Committee meeting. Commissioner Smith had talked about an amendment to to have the county administrator be, you know, I'll say a point of contact on this resolution, if there's questions in applying the policy in the future. So I have a motion to amend, and if, if I was more prepared, I would have wrote, written this out for our clerk, so I apologize. So the second to last, well, the last one, it says, be it finally resolved. So this would be prior to that. It would be, be it further resolved. The county adminis, I'll read it first, and I'll read it slowly for the clerk. Be it further resolved, the county administrator shall be the point of contact for questions regarding this resolution, because I could envision questions coming up. So let me restate that. Be it further resolved, the county administrator shall be the point of contact for questions regarding this resolution. And I did want to, I, I did have a conversation with the county administrator, you know, and, and the merits of, you know, bring it back to the board if there's questions, or the merits of having county administration. And we jointly thought the best way to move forward was to put it in the hands of county administration. If he was uncertain, he would bring it to the board, so.
I support. Thank you. There's been an amendment offered by Commissioner Nakagiri with support by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion, any comment, any objection? Seeing that none will vote on the amendment that reads, be it further resolved, the county administrator shall be the point of contact for questions regarding this resolution. And it's inserted between it, right above the finally resolution. All those voice vote, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I hear eight to one, it passes. Mr. Chair, nobody else? Has a second comment? Proceed.
Livingston County, there are many good things about Livingston County, and I really feel in my heart of hearts that this collaborative body is really one of the highlights of Livingston County. I think that the work that they do as a whole is that the people of our county are served well through this board. I, I is that the people of our county are served well through this board. I, I, even though this particular thing I maybe see a little different than they, uh, I always brag about you guys, so.
Any further comment, question, objection, analysis, observation? Commissioner Domas.
Thank you. I was on the board. Um, I've been on the board for an awfully long time and I've seen a lot of changes take place. But they've always been progressive, not progressive in a political sense, but they, um, but they've always taken place slowly and deliberately. And the formation of this organization serves a good purpose and one which, uh, is one of the attractive things about this county. We care about one another. But it was set up deliberately to be an independent and neutral organization that served the people. When I first saw this, it struck me that, that this ad or that this advertisement was inconsistent with the goals of the, uh, formation of this organization. And so as I say, things change gradually and this may very well be one of them. But at this point, I will support the resolution that Commissioner Nakagiri brought to us.
Seeing no other hands to comment, I'll close discussion. We'll go into a voice vote for the resolution as amended. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The vote is eight to one, it passes. We're on to item K in paragraph twelve. It's number two oh two three dash oh six dash one oh one. It's a resolution approving a three-year extension for the employment agreement with Nathan Byrd for county administrator or board, uh, by the Board of Commissioners.
Move it.
Moved by Domus, support by Deaton. Administrator Byrd, if you'd like to comment, that's fine.
Just here if there are any questions about the agreement. Just for anybody watching, state law requires that county administrators work under an agreement. So this is typical. Those agreements can last three years at a time. So this agreement's within state law. And if you have any questions about any of the provisions, I'd be happy to address those.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing no questions, I'll close the discussion. We'll go to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero unanimous passes. We're on to item number thirteen entitled accounts payable reports. Thirteen A reads claims dated June twelve, twenty twenty-three. Thirteen B reads payables dated May thirteen through June five, twenty twenty-three. May I get a motion? Motion, Smith? What? Moved by Chairman, excuse me, Commissioner Smith. And supported by Commissioner Domus. All those in favor, voice vote kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero, thirteen A and B passes. We're at item number fourteen, which is call to the public. This is a chance for the cub- public to talk to us. You have two minutes to, uh, tell us something. It's not a question and answer. We don't, not allowed really to, uh, respond. And, uh, I will tell you that, uh, there is a statute that says, uh, if you're disturbing a meeting and we're taped and everybody's photoed here, we can easily invoke that statute. So a large portion of you have been very polite tonight and I thank you for that. Madam?
Stacy Farrell, Oceola. Hi there, um, the.
I wanted to say is, uh, no one has said.
Stacy on Zoom.
It's the red light. You have to push it till the green light comes on. There you go.
Okay, hi. Sorry about that.
We'll start over.
Oh, okay. Well, you guys heard the important stuff. Um,
You don't want me to take your time away?
No, I don't. Um, thank you though. Um, I, I heard earlier with regards to the resolution, um, for, um, Mr. Baca's department, that you had reached out and, and spoke to him about, uh, why you were going to vote no. And what seems to be missed, what, what is really confusing for me is that there's been more conversation here tonight about this issue than there has been with the people who are responsible for providing the services. Um, and so I, I still invite you to have that conversation, but not with me because I'm not the one who provides the services. I just hold the citizen seat. I invited you because I wanted you to come. And, and I would, I would even extend that invite to, to the folks on Zoom. I'm sorry.
You're not allowed to talk to anybody but me.
Oh, you?
I'm it.
Okay.
I'm the guy.
Well, then I'm gonna.
Listening, but you don't get to.
Then I invite all of you and you, um, to, um, reach out to the Pride Alliance or Livingston Diversity Council and have those tough conversations. If, uh, if I may, um, when the subject of honor comes up, um, I, I do happen to disagree. If anyone has happened to visit, um, Mr. Nakagiri's Substack page, that might provide a little bit of a different perspective. And the one thing that came up on both sides tonight was the mental health crisis. And there's, there's two things that could be done very easily to support, um, the mental wellness of, of people in our community. And that would be, um, to support that reaching higher program that was presented earlier. And revisiting the three resolutions that I previously submitted, uh, to commit to supporting mental, uh, wellness efforts with the same hell yes fervor as the, as the second amendment. Um, I, I'm sure the folks over at Community Mental Health would love to partner with you all to, um, uh, enact a, a mental wellness resolution that, um, serves all of our constituents and, and gives, is that it?
I'm, I'm still in charge.
That gives everybody, um, uh, the opportunity to be seen and heard here in Livingston County. So I would like for the conversations to, um, continue, not just in this room, but with the people who actually do the work. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Mark Heims Howell.
All right. Good evening again. Uh, thank you. This is Mark Heims from, uh, from Howell and I am of course, the chair of the Human Services Collaborative Body, which we mentioned a lot about today. We talked for a good, almost thirty, more over than thirty minutes, I think, on that. So I just, uh, wanted to, to say that, I mean, whatever this resolution means for us, we are willing to work with whatever happens and is going on about it because we need to make sure that, again, there is the right parameters, right? I know policy is important. So we want to work to see what is and clarified more so of what's within the scope. So I just, uh, just wanted to, to, to talk with you about that, that it's, this is not like, of course, the end of, of this, but it is also the, the start of, uh, maybe a new fostered, better relationship with you guys. So let's, let's work together somehow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any more cards for in the chambers.
Thank you. And, um, Zoom?
Zoom, um, we have a guest with the initials of YJ. Do you want to stick your name, please?
Hi, um, I'm not going to give out my name. I don't want to be targeted by you bigots. Okay? I mean, what you're doing, no, 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 no. Listen to me.
Oh, you have to cease. Name and your residence.
No, you, you let this eleven A guys speak a few weeks ago. He was pro NRA and you let him speak, man. No, no, sir. You let, you let other people speak with pseudonyms.
The misdemeanor of disturbing this meeting. And we have your voice. You've talked to us a number of times. And so it doesn't, it, you're, you're just going to have to play by the rules. They're really simple. Your name, your residence, you get two minutes. If you want to do that, proceed. If you don't, we'll go to the next Zoom caller and we probably have the electronic ability to go to the next one. Are you still on? I'm concluding that she's, uh.
I, no, I am still here, sir. I was waiting for you to stop interrupting so I can speak.
Name?
Um, Stephanie. And you know me well, and I'm not going to be targeted by some of the bigots that follow you, sir. No, I'm, uh, your other bigots got to speak with a pseudonym. So I will not, if they're allowed to be a coward, so, so can I. It works both ways, sir.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, yes, it does. Eleven, Galaxy eleven A spoke a few weeks ago, one, an NRA supporter.
Go to the next Zoom caller, please.
Uh, the next person we have is David Christensen.
Hi there. My name is David Christensen. I live in the city of Howell. Uh, I just, I heard in the discussion, a bit of conversation about, you know, we're not going to support or we don't want to like promote private organizations that either on the far right or the far left. And there was an e- equivalency between, you know, for instance, the Proud Boys, a self-identified Western chauvinist organization, or the NRA with, um, I just guess gay people, queer people, as if these are the same thing. Queer people are not political. Their existence is not political. They have always been around. They will always be here. They are just people who are trying to live their lives in this county, um, as opposed to, uh, political organizations or, you know, right-wing street fighting organizations. Those are just not the same thing. And to eat, and to call them equal is really, um, I don't know. Um, it's not great. And then also, um, so that's all I have to say. And then also, what's Lisa's last name? Lisa R. R. What? What's Lisa's last name? She's allowed to say what she wants without, without giving her last name, but yet, you know, it's okay. So that's all I have to say. You know my name. You know where I live. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next Zoom name?
Uh, next one we have is Anna W.
Hi, my name is Anna. I also live in the city of Howell and I, I just joined the Zoom. I have been watching most of the meeting though.
Slow down, Anna.
I got home from work when it had already begun and I was watching on my partner's computer.
You have a last name?
Anyhow, I also attended, um.
Do you have a last name? If you have a last name, please give it. Then I'll start your time.
Okay. I'm sorry. I saw that I was muted. Can y'all hear me?
What's your last name, Anna?
Your last name, Anna?
My last name is Wyasaki.
Thank you. And you live?
Thank you. And you live?
In the city of Howell.
I'm starting your.
I'm starting your call.
As you start talking.
As you start talking.
Let me have it.
Let me have it.
Okay. First, um, I know the woman who didn't want to give her last name, um, felt a little cornered and maybe got responsive with you, but I, I believe that she felt unsafe. I think being a supporter of the LGBTQ community, historically and currently can make people feel unsafe. And I think her concern was valid despite how the tone of your exchange felt. Um, I want to second what David said. Uh, I heard some parallels today that I'm glad I can speak to you right now. That made, that insinuated and sort of outwardly claimed that, um, being queer is a political, is political and inherently it's, uh, it's an identity and, um, just a being, uh, in existence. And anyway, um, I heard a lot of other non-sequiturs tonight and a lot of really awful parallels such as a parallel between a pride event and, um, the NRA, which is not about people and people's well-being or the historic oppression of a people. It's about guns and about, uh, a connection between the queer community and, um, the Proud Boys. Um, one is historically and currently oppressed group and one is an outwardly oppressive group. So those parallels show your bias. Uh, I think you kind of missed. I, as a member of the public, I feel a little insulted by, um, your claims, uh, at least one of the board members claims that this has nothing to do with anything other than a vague policy. Um, just the timing of the resolution with the pride event and some of the language you've used tonight kind of shows that these can, conversations should continue, that several of you do have a bias and everyone has a bias. That's okay. Continue learning, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next Zoom caller?
That is the last person that we have.
Commissioner Druck, I did have two more cards turned in.
Sure, let's do it.
Um, Ally Geisner from Marion Township, followed by Yvonne Mackel.
Hello again. Uh, so my name's Ally Geisner. Um, I.
What township did you say?
Uh, Marion Township.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So I just, um, had a, had some similar thoughts to David, but, um, also just wanted to echo that through this, uh, proposition, it sounds like, um, the key here is private events that don't fall under the purview of our human services, um, right? Cause there are other private events like Ascension, um, and things that are promoted through our human services, uh, newsletter, et cetera. Um, and so my biggest concern with this is who is dictating what falls under human services? And people have already called out the comparisons, um, like NRA and Proud Boys, but I, I really urge you to at least have conversations with the people who are, you know, at the head of human services, who are working within the community, because the, both the pride event and, and a lot of other events are really targeted at mental health and wellness, right? At its core, we are allowed to promote mental health and wellness events and part of being a part of your community, is that very thing. And so like on the other side, like our veterans who serve and not comparing the two at all because they go through a lot, but, um, somebody made the comparison of how, you know, as a veteran, you know, going and being with your community can help you process a lot of mental health and trauma. And as somebody who has had trauma, um, sexual and otherwise in my past, um, having a group and community and knowing where to find your people and share with those people can be life-changing. Um, and so I just, I just really encourage the board as you move forward, um, to really think about like what falls under the mission. Um, who's dictating that and what are the, what are the goals?
Thank you.
Yvonne Mackel, Heartland.
Hi, Mr. Drick. I do, I know that I can't address specific board members, but I just wanted to say, I guess to you too, that there was no disrespect that was meant to Mr. Deaton. As someone also who is, shows appreciation and is proud of and supports our military, I felt that it, it would be information that he would want to know because there had been other people that had spoken on the Zoom call that had said, we don't, we only celebrate our military one day in the month and that's inaccurate. And it's unfortunate for people to believe that because we do designate the entire month of May is designated for military appreciation. And while that is something that I am proud of and would want people to know, and when it's brought up as a point of where you fall in an argument, I thought that that would be something that would be important for you to know when people are saying that, you know, yeah, that is a shame that we only do that one day and it is, it's not accurate. So I just wanted to state that, that there was no disrespect that was meant. I just wanted to make sure. Also as someone that appreciates our military, that you would want to know. So.
Thank you. Any more cards?
I, I do not have any additional cards.
And Zoom is exhausted. And so we're now closing our second call to the public. Item number fifteen is entitled closed session. Can I get a motion?
Motion to enter.
Close session to, uh, discuss written legal opinion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Smith.
Thank you. All those voice vote in favor of going into closed session?
This does require a roll call vote. Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Druck.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. If you will, uh, clear the room, we can proceed. Yes. Move to adjourn.
Support.
Are we finished? All in favor? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good night, everyone. Good night, Keisha.